And we'll start this evening with the introduction of the board members that are here. To my far right is an alternate, Jen Martel, who's an alternate this evening. And next to her is Gwen English. Wait. Okay, and next is the Selecting Board Representative, Papa Costa Dees.
Good evening.
Peter Village.
Pete Cameron is our clerk. I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board. And let's see, now we got my able assistant, Aaron Brown. And we're pleased, of course, that Kelly's with us tonight, and John Gruder. Dave, our town planner, has good old fashioned pink eye, so he's not here contaminating everybody.
Thanks for not infecting us, Dave.
I'm gonna rearrange the... Ginger, just a little bit to announce that the Application of Harbor Street Limited Partnership has asked to be continued, so I need a motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
To continue that the public hearing on the Application of Harbor Street Limited Partnership for Tulat Line Adjustments and Subdivision, Planning Board Case Number 1918, to February 13, 2020, at meeting at 7:00 PM. I almost surprised everybody that said AM.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
You had a lonely meeting there.
Yep.
No, no discussions. So those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. So anyone coming for that case, welcome to stay for the rest of the action, or you can go home. Watch us on TV and throw popcorn at us, right? All right, the first thing we're gonna deal with are minutes. And we'll start with, our agenda calls for January 9th, but should we start with December 12th? Because we've been trying to get that set squared away. So I will open the floor to that, and I would have to say that Peter has given me his comments to share as soon as I find that set that he gave me. Here we are. So, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, Pete.
You go right ahead.
Or Gwen. Let's see, line 50. Well, actually, yeah, line 50, he's identified that Mund, a new use allowed in C1 would allow one parking space per residential unit. And could be provided off-site. So he's just added parking and could be to that line. And then on 51 would be, it says 56, but it's gotta be 50 feet, I believe. Same page, he took line 62 and underlined, "It would go to legal after a review is complete." Question mark, should it say it would go to legal review after? I don't know.
Well, I had the same comment.
Okay.
Without knowing what it was.
Okay.
And unfortunately, Dave needs to be here, because I'm not sure, noted "it", and that's line 62, I'm not sure what "it" is to go to legal after the review is complete. I don't know.
It is the Mund addendum.
Yeah, because there is time to revisit that after the first public hearing, so.
Right, so the review is by us and the public. It is the Mund proposal.
Yes.
Legal would be after
Council.
The town is squared away, us internally.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Before it goes to vote, yeah.
So I guess you could make it a more descriptive sentence.
Well, Peter noted it, and I noted it. It does seem to me that I think it needs to be addressed, but I don't want to postpone the minutes.
Okay.
Clearing the minutes just for that. So I'll withdraw my concern, and then we'll withdraw Peter's.
Okay. Line 74, if the unit "it", if the unit is, fourth word in, probably it should be changed to is. Line 99. Mrs. Stekler suggested the parking lot be brought up to standard. Pete put a little carrot between lot and be and put example. Not sure what he's talking about. We're still talking about the the, what is that, new?
Mund.
Mund.
I think that's, I think that's what he, I think it's written as he addressed it at the meeting. I think if there is a part, for example, if there's a parking lot on the site that doesn't, maybe doesn't meet our standards right now, in the future, it could be brought up to standard and could be
Yeah.
changed to meet our desires or our regs. But I think at this point, the parking lot could stay as it is. I think that's, that was my understanding.
Yep. Because on line 100, the other note that Peter has is at the end of that sentence, "Brought up to standards",
Right.
He's added "as they are improved",
Right.
That's just what you're saying, in a different way, I think.
Yeah.
So would that make sense to add that?
And I think it's kind of, Mr. Chair, it's somewhat like what you've talked about for years, and that is, you know, when a building has been repurposed and where it has a new owner that, you know, that maybe we can request that things be updated and beautified at that point. I think, does that, does that make sense?
Okay. That's all that he has. Pete or Gwen or anybody else, as far as that goes.
Mr. Chair, on number, on line 105, I actually add, yeah, at the end of that, the last sentence, I actually asked if turf is discouraged due to maintenance issues. I'd rather have that noted, turn to asked. Asked if turf is discouraged, I was just curious about why turf was discouraged, so it was a, it was more of a question.
There's Peter.
And the only other, only other question I had, on line 39. I think, I mean, the communities would receive $20,000 with a town contribution of five, is that, is that how it's? I mean, this looks like MTAG would receive $20,000, and I don't, I don't think that's right. I don't know if anybody else remembers that.
Are you suggesting matched by the town, or what?
I'm suggesting, yeah, that we, that we could receive $20,000, but we'd have to donate.
We have to kick in five.
Kick in five.
Yeah.
So somehow that, this.
Or matched by the town, I like that clarification. Peter, we've finished going through yours.
Thank you.
And we do.
Did my best on these minutes.
Now, while we're on, a couple back up on 35. We have an acronym, and then we have Mixed Use Neighborhood Development. Well, the acronym for that is M-U-N-D, not M-T-A-G. But I'm gonna withdraw that one, just other than.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Why withdraw it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's misleading the way it is.
So why are you withdrawing it?
Well.
Shouldn't we?
I didn't get any unanimity.
You didn't give anybody a chance, you're absolutely right. Write it down.
What change would you like?
Mund.
Mund.
Okay.
Are you guys sure about the 20 and 5, though, the way that works? Because I'm not positive.
We wouldn't be giving them $20,000.
No.
So.
No, I believe the $20,000 comes to the town, and the town puts out five.
Adds to it, so there's a sum of $25,000
Right.
to spend for the Kelly. The consulting firm.
Right.
So it's a total of 25, I believe.
Yes, I believe so. So I think what he's saying is, and again, it says MTAG. So that should change, Daniel, to Mund on 38.
Well.
I don't wear the MTAG.
No, the, no, MTAG is the grant.
Oh, it is. That's where the confusion is, then, okay.
So MTAG is the grant that helped us get.
Okay, so that's fine.
Ah.
All right, that's how it got confused.
I don't know what MTAG stands for, it's something, something assistance grant.
Okay.
But it's a total of 25.
It's a total of 25, I think.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
I think we're unanimous on that.
Yep, that one's good.
So I think it's right at the beginning of the sentence, isn't it? Helped communities with this, including receiving $20,000, and how about just in saying matching, how we're saying and contributing $5,000.
With the town contributing or something, because it's coming from the town.
Yeah, you can say the community contributing $5,000.
But I suspect that's a requirement, so that's probably why we use the word matched rather than.
But it doesn't match, so I don't like that word.
Okay.
20 and 5 don't really match. It's out of bounds.
How about required? No, that's all right.
And I don't know what
Yep, yep.
he said, but maybe just look at it.
That, I mean, that's the common terminology for grants.
Okay.
Matching. Yeah, match, matching funds.
All right.
It's all that, so that's correct word, whether you like it or not.
Well, you guys are the ones that word minutious to death, so.
Lawyers used to be paid by the number of words, I think, you should know that.
I have one quick change on line 37. The planner from Horsey Witten Group is Nate Kelly, not Nick Kelly.
Well, with all of those corrections, additions, deletions, I'll move that we accept the minutes of December 12, 2019.
As noted.
As no, well, yes, as noted.
Second.
Nud and seconded. Okay, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
One abstention, thank you. All right, let's move along from January 9th. Please. Peter, wanna begin?
Not sure.
I used you as an excuse to begin, but go ahead.
Okay, well, so line 15. I just want to clarify that it was just Jen who was active and not myself.
Okay. Just Jen night, huh?
And then there's vote totals throughout add up to eight, so I think we need to adjust the vote on 22, line 22 to 502.
Yep.
Then.
Good catch, let me do math.
There's a couple more, just staying on the vote counts, 143 should be 610. 151 should be 610. 201 should be 520.
Somebody was voting and I didn't catch them.
And then maybe just a couple other clarifications, line 119. I think where it says they can hold a new one with what was discussed, I think. Instead of one, maybe a new hearing with what was discussed. And then line, at the end of line 146 into 147, it says, "Mr. Stekler added and circle back with Nate", I think maybe asked about circling back with Nate from Horsey Witten.
I'm sorry, what was that line, Nate? I mean, Peter, I.
146.
I got it, thank you.
147. And then Gwen, might, did you have a comment on 193?
Not yet. Maybe in a minute.
Ms. English asked what materials originally, and I think you were talking about siding.
Yes.
To clarify there, what siding materials.
Siding materials, thank you.
That's it for me.
Any others?
Yep.
Okay.
Gwen, go ahead, you're the next one.
No, no.
Your line.
No, I'm on that.
You all said. 181 and 182, well, that, that, yes. "Mr. Sharples indicated some windows were removed and Julian balconies", now, I think it's Julian balconies were removed?
I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it was.
I think it was.
I think the same number of windows are in the plan.
Yeah. Maybe, so you indicated some windows and Julian balconies were removed, something like that. If that's correct.
Yes, I think so.
Just move the words and, just move the words "were removed after balconies".
Okay.
So it would read, "Indicated some windows and Julian balconies were removed."
Yes, yep, that works. But I don't believe you removed any windows.
Oh.
Some of the Julian balconies were removed from some of the windows, or something like that.
Yeah.
I think there's the same number of windows. I think what's happening is that balconies were removed and replaced by windows. In other words, the space is still there, but you can't step out or whatever you can do, put out the window, something like that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, on line 194 and 195. It says, "Ms. Martel indicated she was not fond of vinyl either and thinks contrasting colors would be nice", which is not really what I said, I said that when we originally approved the plan, the contrasting colors were in place to keep this new building distinctly separate from the historic property on the same lot. The new building is now going to be the same color as the historic property. And so that was, it wasn't like a personal preference of aesthetics, it was, I think is what's being conveyed here.
Yep. Okay, we're ready for a motion?
Now, let me go back to 184. And John, this is more, you noted a big improvement for the historic district, okay, that's fine. Noted, "It looked like doors are back on", which is a concern. But we all know what, where the doors were, but do we need to make it clear? Or maybe it's all right, if you're comfortable with the way it.
Miss Miller, it looked like the doors are back, probably on, I want to call it on the second bedroom, because it's not, on the what was to be an office, I think.
If you're comfortable with what it is, then obviously I will be comfortable.
I think we could probably add in there on the office, because that's what we had designated it. Not making them into that extra bedroom.
Yeah, I think it's, the reason for that is at the end of the sentence. Really, not making that into an extra bedroom.
Well, then we could argue about what is that, but never mind.
Okay.
Okay, forget it, I withdraw it.
Now are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that.
Everyone else said?
I move to accept the Planning Board January 9th, 2020 minutes as amended.
Okay, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Abstention?
Yeah. You, me.
I'll go slower when I say abstention.
Sometimes we abstain.
I like it when you move things along. You're doing fine.
All right, now, we are continuing the public hearing on our proposed zoning amendment for 2020 town meeting warrant. We discussed them last time, and let's see what David says here. Okay, "Board discussed the Mund, after holding the public hearing, voted to continue the public hearing until this meeting, tonight, and have a second public hearing on the Mund, with only one revision to change 35-foot maximum allowable height on Lincoln Street area to 50 feet."
Which we didn't do.
So, we have yeah, we then chose to move ahead. So tonight, we have two, two copies. One of which was dated December 17, 2019, which has 35 feet on Lincoln Street, and the next one that evolved from our discussion was revised as of January 13, 2020, with a 50-foot height. So is there any more discussion on that, or to clarify that? The
I think you need to discuss which one we're gonna propose, right?
Which, which one would we propose?
Well, the consensus of the committee was to keep the height at 35 and then examine over the next year.
That's correct.
And.
That was your recommendation, yes.
That's the committee's recommendation.
Yep.
It is, it actually impacts not just Lincoln Street, that area
Yes.
that was discussed going to 50. It impacts an area, if you get the map.
Yeah, Dave gave us one tonight.
It's kind of hard to view it, because everybody have that map? Some of it goes over, actually, Kelly, near your neighborhood.
Yep.
Columbus and Winter. A lot of that's been recently redeveloped, but there's certainly like the bowling alley, parcels like that. So it's, we felt that, you know, if you start thinking all 50 feet in that area, we didn't feel like as a committee, we've had enough time to really take into consideration the potential impact of going and adding that to that space. And don't know how aware the public has been of the proposal.
Of that, yes, yeah. I agree with you.
And, you know, not that we want to be pushing for that, but if somebody wants to do something, they can come to the zoning board and ask for a variance
Yes.
from the height restriction
Yep.
to go from 35 to 50 feet, if there's something on the docket that no one's aware of, and that would limit them, they still have the right to do that, and they can also reference that this has been an open discussion and is kind of in a review process by the planning board, which is accurate. process by the planning board, which is accurate. So I don't think, my opinion, I don't think as a committee, we've had enough time to really make a, uh, strong decision on that and feel that it could impact. Although we do want this to have some teeth and to be utilized, uh, we didn't feel like we were quite there. So our recommendation is to keep that at thirty-five. But discuss it, it's not a done deal.
Any other discussion? Anybody in the public would like to comment about that? Please step the microphone and introduce yourself, so that we know who's speaking and our first.
So my name is Andrew Rock. Well, I spoke before about all the advantages of increasing the height, environmental precedent, meaning that there's already existing buildings. My building would actually be less height under the thirty-five foot zoning. If you don't do a core where you, uh, put, uh, more units towards the train station, you will have increased traffic flow over the string bridge, because essentially what you're doing is you're doing this, and the less housing there means more people going to the, the train station, and you're just gonna increase traffic, you're gonna, and you're not going to make any environmental impact. The other precedent is that every other community that has commerce, uh, mass transit, public transportation, has gone to a higher density. We're not even asking for a higher density, and I want to clarify what I think the discussion was last time. It wasn't to go to fifty feet at the boundary, it was to go to fifty feet, fifty feet from the boundary. So this has nothing to do with the actual boundary of where these buildings can be built. This is really saying, look, after thirty-five feet, if you're on the street, these are hidden portions, and essentially what we're talking about is the mass space that runs along the tracks, on both sides of the tracks. This is not to put fifty feet and alter the community's character on Lincoln Street, where, I mean, the most culturally sensitive place in, in Exeter might be Folsom's Tavern and the, um, American Independence Museum. You, the, there's gonna be fifty feet of building in front of those. I, that, that's a dramatic change in character and almost maybe shocking, but I think it's the right thing to do, and it would also affect Swayze Parkway as well. There would be no need for tents there anymore because of the shadowing. The way Lincoln Street and the railroad runs is there would be no effect on light, no effect on sight. These are, the spacing with the fifty-foot setback is in the middle. We're essentially saying, or essentially I'm promoting the idea of, look, if you can't see it, 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 and it's against the tracks, it doesn't really matter, whereas, you know, the WC district with the fifty feet, some people are gonna lose their river view, right? Some people, like, the, the other dramatic change in this whole idea is if you're coming down at the mo, at the intersection of Portsmouth Ave and Route twenty-seven, probably the most busy intersection in Exeter, where Fenelon Auto is and the Exeter Cycles, literally you're gonna have a fifty-foot building there, and the historic district sign is gonna be right next to it. So, you know, I just feel that Exeter on terms of being an even playing field for all the zones, as, and we're even, I'm even promoting the idea of not even getting an even fit playing field. I'm saying, look, fifty-foot setback, let's respect communities, the people that want, no change to it, but, you know, the environmental impact, the, the, you guys have all the regs in place to, you know, monitor it. The other thing too is half, most of the, um, can I just get a map real quick?
Yep.
So this is a map indicating what properties would be affected by the fifty-foot setback. Just want to show you that this is the entire C-one district, and primarily the main idea here is it is against the railroad tracks.
Zero.
Right. And, um, the only portions, a lot of these here can't really be done because, and like in here, over on the Arbor Street and over by what the arc space is, you guys have already put in the regulations that you need at least more than likely ten units with ten spaces. These properties don't have that amount of space to do that, so most of this is mute. Really, the only properties that potentially have any effect with the fifty-foot height, if you do a fifty-foot setback, would be where Shooter's is, where Prescott Park and Rose, Al Rose Shoes would be, and along the storage station. Those storage areas are the least, highest and best used aspects of a, it, they, they should, they're, they're outlawed in most transportation-oriented design projects. Those, those are the, they're basically storage, those should be places for people. And what we're saying is, is in these areas, let's, let's away from everybody else, where most, where every other community is putting higher housing, let's put higher housing there, so that you're being, again, this is for the future. We're, these C-one zones were created, what, seventy-five years ago? And there was no master plan up until about three or four years ago? So let's just call that like deferred maintenance on the zoning. So, yes, it may be a little more dramatic here, because we are going to this, but how about in fifty years or thirty years, when these properties are developed, you're not gonna get a second chance here to say, hey, maybe we should have gone a little bit higher here. It would be like, you can't build another lane or another lane, you, you, you can't, like, if you have a bridge, it's not like you can build another lane on the bridge. This, once these properties are titled and deeded out of these private ownerships and you have multiple owners, it's over. You, you, you're not gonna be able to do anymore. So what I'm saying is, is think of what the, this board did maybe fifty years ago when they put the Merrill Block in. That's higher or, or whatever. It's, it's, this is common practice. Every other community has built more housing around the train. It just is common sense, and yes, it may seem a little dramatic now, and I, I don't want to offend my neighbors and, and change the character of the town, whereas I think other areas, there would be even a greater dramatic change of character. This is, this is about being environmentally sane. This is about reducing carbon emissions. You guys collectively, right here, could probably take hundreds and hundreds of cars off the streets, and it, and that collective decision probably will do more for the environment than anything else in any other community. We could recycle for a hundred years in this community and not have that same effect. This is an important thing. I know this is hard, because maybe we're one of three communities in the entire state that has a train station. We're probably one of only two places in the, in the state that's gonna have bus, train, taxi, rideshare apps, all in the same area. That's how you build communities. These are the people that are only gonna make a decision to have one car. These are people that are gonna be environmentally conscious, that are gonna have one car. They are probably not gonna be the type of people, they don't have a lawn or a roof to rake or bushes to, I think, these people are probably gonna spend more time outside their home than in their home, and what that means is they're probably gonna want better public spaces. You want to revive the Ioka, guess what? People like this and, 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 and people that are living these, um, you know, communities that want these things, and these are how things get promoted, and, and, and you have the supply of the Ioka. You need a little more people to make it more viable. So I guess in the long run, I, I view this as, you know, a little bit out, not a precedent. I mean, the precedent has been set. I know it seems maybe a little dramatic, but I think other areas, the C, other C-one zones are getting, uh, a better shape, and I think it's inequitable that the other zone, when a simple fifty-foot barrier to an island-type setting, um, makes sense to me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
I'm Andrew Richards, um, I live on Lincoln Street, and with all due respect, I can appreciate everything that he has shared, uh, but I don't happen to share a lot of his opinions about the height of, uh, the proposal. I would definitely want to stick with a thirty-five foot. I think that the scale is really important from a, a character perspective, and I still think you can meet a lot of the objectives that he was, he was stating, only a fifty-foot, uh, height restriction could offer. And, um, you know, the, the statement that you get a, a one-shot deal, I don't think is true. We've seen places being torn down and new buildings getting erected with new heights in them, so I don't think it's a one-and-done. I think it's incredibly important that, uh, we do set a restriction in place, um, at a lower level. You know, the shade, just saying it's all on the railroad tracks, shade goes both ways, right? It's, it's not only gonna shade the railroad track side, it will shade the other side too. And, uh, the, the view that you get looking down the tracks, across the tracks, all of that is incredibly changed and morphed by a, a fifty-foot building. And so I, I just wanted to weigh in on, on my opinion around that, and, uh, I, I think that you can meet both objectives, um, with a lower.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Fred Amy, um, I live on Lincoln Street. Andrew and I have been neighbors for ten years, um, always gotten along, I respect his, uh, his opinions and, and, uh, understand that there have been times, I think, where he's felt, because he has a, you know, an open parking lot there, that sometimes everybody forgets that that's not just public land, um, which I sympathize and understand. I guess there are a few issues, some of the things that I do agree with Andrew, I do think it's a significant opportunity. I think the commuter rail station is a, a significant asset. It's one of the reasons I moved here eleven years ago. I've been, I used to ride from Portland to Boston, and now I still do. But I think that, that, part of the question, at least for this specific area, is commuter rail town characteristics, and it's, it's a little bit more of a mixed bag, I think, than, um, than, than it's been characterized. You know, a lot of the more northern stations and even closer to Boston, um, are really parking-driven. You know, Newburyport, Wells, Saco, Durham, Wilburn, Portland, in all cases, you're, you're either in a parking lot or a multimodal, um, sort of, uh, terminal. The cases where you've got large buildings adjacent to the stations that I recognize from my ridership have been, you know, Haverhill and Lawrence, and those are much more urban, uh, transitional towns. In terms of similar town scale, the cases I can think of that, that sort of have some of the characteristics of Exeter, uh, from a commuter rail standpoint are Winchester, Mass, probably a little bit bigger town, um, but in terms of the scale of the buildings that surround the train station there, um, it's mixed scale, some, some are maybe taller, but footprints are fairly compact, um, as a, as a sort of an impression. Uh, another location that I can think of where, where you've got residential near the train station is Ballard Vale, Mass, which is outside of Andover. It looks like there's been some relatively, you know, in the last ten years, residential development there, which seems to be, uh, fit well into the community. I did a project down in Andover a few years back and had a chance to look at it. But in those cases, those were not taller buildings, they're, I think, two-to-three-story residences, um, but walking distance to the train station. The three-to-four-story building, I think a lot of the concern that I and many of my neighbors have with the fifty-foot height restriction or the four-story, and for me, it's really either three or four stories. It's not so much the height, it's the scale of the footprint. It's been difficult, I think, for a lot of us with the, trying to balance the, you know, sort of sympathy and, and recognition that, that workforce housing would be beneficial to bring into town, um, and to balance that with the, the fact that most of the workforce housing that we see or think of is, it, it goes one way or the other. In, in my neighborhood, it tends to be what were once single-family homes that have been converted into multi-units, and they're operated by owner-renters, and they're well-maintained, and the scale of the neighborhood is, has that characteristic. There's space between the buildings, shadows, light, I mean, I was thinking about it this weekend when we had beautiful light on Sunday, just how important it is, um, with the low sun angles that we get in the winter, that we manage scale carefully. It may not matter as much if you're in Florida, but it matters here. And so, you know, you look around, the Lincoln Street neighborhood, the footprints are, you know, nominally twenty-four by forty-eight, you know, thirty-six by sixty-something. I think part of the concern that, that many of us are, are responding to is that a lot of the, what's characterized as having a workforce housing component tends to be much, much larger blocks. And so then you get into the si, the ki, the situation where view corridors are blocked and bigger, um, bigger shadow patterns are, are visible. I think a couple of the, um, cases, I think twenty-seven and thirty-one Chestnut is one where, you know, if I, if I'm riding my bike or walking through J.D. Hill, from the backside of that, I'm like, oh my God, those, those neighbors on the, you know, on the J.D. Hill side really lost a, a sense of space because of the scale of it. It's nice, you know, from the, the mill side with the big setbacks and things, but I think that's a concern. I, I am aware that, you know, the, the, uh, Housing Committee has, has met with Chinburg, and I looked up, you know, Watson Woods, which was something that was, was discussed, I guess, at one of the previous recent meetings. That looks nice, but you've got, you've got scale, you know, you've got the scale of the site to accommodate the buildings. I know we've got, you know, other recent developments, Ray Farm, um, Acadia Lane, you know, a lot of these that I'm familiar with from, you know, Town Woods and things, I think they're nicely done, they're carefully done, they're, you know, backed off the main streets and things, but again, those sorts of things being pushed with, with limited lot lines, I think, would be disruptive potentially. And I'm wondering if one way to, again, Dave's not here, but, you know, is, is one way to say, you know, what's the allowable square footage? And rather than spreading it out into a big block, is there a way you can break it up and play with the height scale? I mean, I think that's something that might be worth considering, um, as some relief potentially to, uh, an owner or developer. Those are my major, um, issues. I think the other concern is, is, um, the traffic management. You know, the Lincoln Street neighborhood right now, we've just done a, a, you know, Plan NIH had come in and assisted with some of the planning there. To me, it seems to be working well. You definitely slow down, it definitely feels different, particularly on the, the commercial end of Lincoln Street. But my experience coming through there has been that everybody's been very courteous. It actually forces you to slow down, it forces you to, you know, wave people through or, you know, whatever. However, from a crossing guard standpoint or from a, a personal standpoint, um, I think we all notice sometimes the backups at the, you know, say, the corner of Main and Lincoln, um, you know, that, that start to then block the commercial area, that start to block the railroad crossing, and then the backup down to Main Street School. None of those things are gonna be improved necessarily by increasing, you know, the, the load. I don't, you know, I think Andrew makes a good case. You know, if we can get residents who don't have cars, that's good. The problem is, you know, as much of a walking city as Exeter is, you still need a car to get groceries and things, you know, this time of year. So I'm not sure what that, the answer is there. I guess my, my sense is, based on the further discussion that's taken place, and I think also from seeing the recent, uh, townhome development on Main Street across from the Shell Station, which is a thirty-five-foot height restriction, and I don't believe benefits from any of the, uh, the zoning latitude that's allowable by this proposal, um, it already seems excessively dense to me by the standards of the historic neighborhoods of, of, of Exeter, whether it's the historic district or, you know, my neighborhood, the Charter Street neighborhood, the Winter Street neighborhood, a lot of these neighborhoods where the scale just seems to work very nicely and is very enduring and very pleasant and very safe, I'm worried that we're gonna, you know, try to cram too much in, not be environmentally sensitive to the conditions, and, um, and that that's gonna create further problems and, and, and further traffic. So I guess my feeling would be, um, I wish we could do more discussion on this, I wish we could do focus groups based on the various zones, so that we get a better sense of, of the community input. I know we have had some of that, um, and I do appreciate that in the, the, uh, January ninth meeting, that many of the members of the board were very cognizant of that in their, uh, concern about allowing the, uh, the increased height. But there may be a more holistic way to look at it that would allow some latitude on height, but maybe look at, at footprint restrictions as a way to maintain the view corridors and try to improve the scale situation that I think is, is critical and characteristic of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. No, just, uh, one person? Yes, lady, please? No, him.
No, him.
Fix my shirt.
Oh, this is like an auction, it'll cost you $5. Sir, don't turn so red.
I live on Lincoln Street. And I think that 35 feet, it would be really great if you did keep that height restriction just for the scale of the neighborhood. But my real concern is that they will bend over backwards to facilitate all of this housing, and then all of a sudden we'll have the commercial area, whatever commercial land is left, left vacant, kind of like the meeting house, where we put in all that housing and we were promised that we were going to use our commercial land in front and nothing's happening there. And across the street, we got, you know, one Aroma Joe's, and it's like, we only have a certain amount of commercial land. And so I don't know if it's really such a great idea to push the housing first and then wait for the commercial to come.
It is mixed use.
Right, but I'd like to see it grow at the same rate, you know, like to actually see shops underneath, like downtown and living space. What I don't want to see is like what happened to Benz Auto, where I have these big block buildings with no commercial anymore. It's gone. And I don't think it needed to be like that. So that's my concern, is that we're going to use all of our commercial district land for housing because developers are like, oh, you know, we need to have, we can't sell commercial, you know, nobody buys commercial anymore. It's got to be housing. And it's like, well, yeah, I agree, you know, housing, but it's really, the affordability problem is because wages have an increase, it's not because housing prices have. But anyway, that's another story.
So thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't want to have a lengthy time, but come up and just make a few short comments because we've heard you, we understand what you're saying.
What you said, it is a mixed use, so you cannot do any of this.
You need to stand in front of the microphone if you want to talk.
Yes, new microphone, please.
So to address John's point, obviously, you guys know that to do any of this, the fact that you have to provide commercial as well as go through a process of having commercial, there is no way in any of these, that there won't be commercial. If you look in the last page of the month, there's actually an architectural spec that actually specs the commercial underneath the residential. In terms of keeping the character and addressing the light issue, I'm just going to give my map one time. So this area here.
Take the microphone, please.
Sorry. Sorry, rookie mistake again. So again, this is Jerry's in Lincoln Street. This is north-south. North-south. So the area that my neighbors live in is south of the, south of the most of the development that they're worried about. If it's south, it won't have any shadow effect because they're south of the development, which means that even if the building's 100 feet, there would be no shadowing, and they would still maintain the light corridor going up and down the train tracks because the train tracks run north-south essentially. And so there would be no height, there would be no problem with adding height there. And again, the idea here is not to change the character, it's only to put maybe some of the buildings that are higher against the railroad tracks, which is probably the least-used land. And again, you know, spaces look great when you take them to the highest and best use, very much like downtown Exeter. All those spaces are very nice because they're in their highest and best use, and that's all we want to see, that's all I want to see happen to Lincoln Street.
Thank you.
Can I just ask for a comment? Can I ask it?
Yeah, sure.
Gentlemen, sir in the white shirt, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Could I ask you to come to the mic? I had a question for you. I appreciate your comment and your comments, and I just wanted to ask you for some clarity. You spoke, I believe, in favor of limiting, at least at this stage, to the 35 feet in the Lincoln Street area. Are you comfortable with what we have in front of us that we're talking about, at least the committee I'm on is proposing, which is the 50-feet increase in the other areas of the C-1 district, Exeter's downtown, which is Water Street, Maple Street, Spring Street?
Yeah, downtown, it's hard for me to, I mean, I don't, I don't think it would be as much of a problem.
I'm trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to get some feedback from the community.
No, I know, and David mentioned this in feedback from, you know, I'd emailed after I'd reviewed the meeting on the 9th.
There are a couple buildings in that area already, that height as well.
Yeah, I don't see it as being quite as sensitive because it's more, I mean, if you're living downtown, you're already, it's a more urban kind of condition. So you're not there because of your yard, you know, it's a different kind of neighborhood. You don't have a lot of kids around where I think that, you know, the Lincoln Street zone, we do have, you know, it's kid-centric. I think that, you know, Andrew had mentioned the PEA library last time, and I, you know, so I went back and looked in that, I was like, yeah, that must have been a controversial thing when they built it. And, you know, I love the way PEA does their land development, I mean, they're a top-notch institutional owner. It did look like they were doing, you know, about one and a half to one in terms of the setbacks for the higher, you know, building, just to give it a little space around it. So, you know, that might be a way to consider it, but I'm not sure if that makes some sites unviable.
Right.
Where there's already a zero-lot line situation, it's a different story. I mean, I'm.
Architectural, we're trying to get them to step back to like the highest peaks of the building won't be right up against the road, they'll be set back, you know, further from.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, it's the sun angle question, you know, I mean, I'd love to continue to talk about it, but the other question I had was, how do we establish that datum for 35 feet or 50 feet?
How do you establish it?
Yeah, like, is that based on a, an unimproved survey, where you're saying, okay, these are the existing contours, the existing datum for where we're going to put the building? Or is that for a site plan development that talks about actually bringing fill in in order to stabilize things for roadways and foundations? Does that then become the datum? Because that, you know, that could be a plus or minus.
It's measured at the street level.
Yeah.
I think it's the street.
Okay, so, you know, it's tricky on a site that has as much.
When you brought up on Main Street, it's like 40 feet.
Okay.
The one across from the Shell.
Yeah.
That measures out at actually 41, I believe, at the peaks, because they have those funny.
So they were able to get a variance to do that one?
I don't know if they got a variance or not, but that's what it measures at.
Okay, it felt big compared to its neighbors.
It does feel big.
And that one worried me because you've got, I mean, the good thing, again, per the solar charts, is the sidewalk is on the sunny side of the building.
Yeah.
The thing that worried me when I, and I actually drove in there over the weekend to take a look at it, the parking behind those buildings is going to get very, very little height a lot of times of the year. So it's going to be dependent on snow melt and other things, you know, kind of washing into that.
Sure.
Because when it gets finished, you know, any project is a mess till it finally gets finished and it has two or three years to settle in.
Yeah. But I don't think that's going to change the light there. I think, I think there's, they're going to get, you know, I mean, as we all know, if we have, if we have wood-clad buildings, the north side of your building, you've always got issues.
Right. So you're saying, though, it's more specific to what I was trying to get you to point on, was that the 35 to 50, going to 50, in that district that we discussed, you're not unhappy with it?
I generally don't think that's the major, because I don't think it would change the character of the downtown. You've got longer contiguous blocks.
Yeah.
See, and that's sort of the perception, I think, of the committee, that they're, although they're zone-similar, they do feel different. The character and the development of these areas over time is different. So we felt very comfortable pushing forward on the, to the board, that this kind of two-piece, 35 and one, 50 and the other.
I mean, it's funny now that you bring that up, because when I think of Portsmouth Ave, and probably for a lot of us, it's like, unless you're living in that neighborhood, and I've known people up on Highland, but I haven't known anybody kind of down on the Portsmouth Ave, I don't give it much thought because it's the gateway to the commercial area. And so, you know, Andrew's point about, you know, that site could become, you know, could cast some big shadows. So I don't know what the answer is there either, but, I mean, I think a lot of it is trying to play the balance between scale, footprint, and, you know, light, view corridors, and the maintenance required by, you know, not taking that into account, particularly that could be problematic.
Sure, a lot of that's design-related, site plan-related.
It's just tricky. Once it gets started as pro forma, based on the zoning, it's hard to stop that train because it's, you know, I work in architecture and construction planning, and, you know, once you get past the concept phase, it's pretty tricky to.
Yeah, it is.
To slow it down.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you. My feeling is that the.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, please, again.
So Andrew and I have been friends for years, but we often don't see eye to eye.
Good neighbor, huh?
But as far as it goes with, you know, that there's a requirement to have the commercial underneath, right in here, it says that as part of the conditional permit, the applicant may propose and the planning board may allow deviation from any of the design standards for reasons like it goes beyond the convenience of the applicant or is requested primarily as a cost-saving measure. So I still am worried that we're going to end up with just a bunch of housing and no commercial.
Where are you on that?
That's page 5, 619S, go to B. Five. Do we have the same one?
Yeah, I think so. January 13th?
Yeah.
So if you see it.
Affordability of design standards.
Yeah, so that's the design, that's not the use.
So, right, but wouldn't you design a building to have its commercial in it?
It's a requirement. So design gets more into architectural.
Right.
You know, windows, because we kind of trying to guide this to sit, to fit into the community, to not be, you know, to feel like Exeter, like adhere to the master plan. And we tried to put forward some design standards to help someone understand this section of the zone.
Based on the master plan.
Based on the master plan.
Right.
Yeah, so we're not saying someone can design out commercial use here, they would have to get a variance for that. Which we can't stop from getting a variance, that's a legal right. We can't plan out the right to request a variance. That's allowed, that's a New Hampshire law.
But as a planning board, I'm hoping that you guys, you know, will try to make sure that it's inclusive like that.
Absolutely. We, I think, we would say that we could have done better on a couple of things you actually brought up.
Yeah.
Right.
And GBA makes some of those decisions.
Yeah.
Reread that first sentence, though, at number one. And it says the proposed deviation represents a need that goes beyond convenience for the applicant, not for the convenience of the applicant, but beyond the convenience of the applicant or other cost-saving. Read number one again.
Yeah, it does say that.
It does say.
Yeah, this is a pretty, this is a lot to digest. That's why this is not, we've, our committee met, I don't even know how many times.
Half a dozen times.
Yeah, quite a few, and we deal with this stuff ongoing, so it takes a while to really digest this stuff, it really does. And there's a lot to it. So it's good questions, for sure, good comments.
No, I think, I think we've had the discussion we've heard tonight. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? All right, then let me bring it back to the board. To me, the discussion we've had is really, points out the need, I think, to stay with what, 35 feet. It's another whole, a lot of neighborhood questions, and we talked about sun and everything else tonight, and a lot of effort has gone into this, and I'm not saying because of that we need to move ahead, but it just hasn't been put together quickly, and I'm not comfortable that there's been enough public input on Lincoln Street to make that change, us sitting here, if you will.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Well, everything was going on, and people saying, well, it's not going to, it's going to be in the back, it's going to be way in the back, or it's going to be in the middle. I happen to live in the neighborhood that this is in. Shooters, you mentioned shooters, not going to affect anybody. I have 14 neighbors, and I live right across the street. It will affect me deeply, as it will my 13 neighbors, who all are right next to shooters. So a 50-foot building in the middle of a residential neighborhood primarily will be a problem. Additionally, myself, most of my neighbors can see your property in the winter. So if you go 50 feet, I can see that. And so I would agree with Lang that we need more study.
Yeah, it is.
Saying that, I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm just saying that we can't just change it to 50 feet if 400 people came out and said 35 was better for the neighborhood. Shadows aside, anybody in the residential side of Lincoln Street is still going to see 50-foot building, shadow or not. And so I think it needs a lot more study, and it's not something that we should, after all this discussion and input from 400 people that live in this town, just arbitrarily change it to 50 when we have the opportunity to do the research, approve at 35 now, and then if research and data warrant changing it to 50, then we are able to do that.
And you should say, Kelly, that in addition to 35, it's also reducing parking requirements, reducing unit size, allowing more units. The entire district gets benefits from what we're talking about proposing, not just.
This is true.
Downtown area. So the only difference is one area can go to 35 and one area can go to 50. That's the only difference. So there's a lot of benefit to any property owner in this district that's being proposed. I just think the height part is, one of those ones that is, Pete would say, could have unintended consequences down the road if we don't, aren't careful about it. I think he's right. He said it again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that twice tonight?
I hope only you realize.
Twice in recent history.
Any comments down there, or?
Chair would be willing to hear a motion?
I'll make a motion then. I'll move the board place the proposed amendment regarding the mixed-use neighborhood development with the latest revision date of December 17, 2019, on the 2020 town warrant with the recommendation for adoption.
I'll second.
Who would have seconded? Any discussion? I'd like to call for a hand vote, please. So those in favor? I think there should be a roll vote. That's what I'm doing. Well, you said a hand vote. Yeah. I misunderstood you. I want each person.
Oh, you want to go one at a time?
One at a time. Okay. Any problems with that? John, I'd like to start with you.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes? Yes.
Aye.
No. Gwen, what was your vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven-zero.
Seven-zero. Motion passes. We will be talking about this more, I'm sure. And thank you for your time and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Well, as part of our duty, well, as a planning board. It's true. To look. Next, we have a continued public hearing on the application of I.S. Realty Trust for the proposed subdivision of existing 5.5-acre parcel located 100 Linden Street into five single-family lots associated with site improvements and wetland conditional use permit for proposed impacts to the wetland buffer. Subject property situated at R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District is tax map parcel number 104-71, in this case, 19-13. And let me just see here what our planner has for us. Would you like me to read this, or have you folks all read?
You can read it. I think you should read into the record.
Okay. What I'm reading is what our town planner has prepared for us to consider. Applicant has submitted a subdivision application and wetlands conditional use permit, application for the proposed subdivision of a 5.58 acre parcel located 100 Linden Street into five single-family residential lots. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District and is identified as tax map parcel number 104-71. Proposed subdivision plan depicts, the plan depicts lot number five as having a lot area of 85,581 square feet and will include the existing home, will include an existing home. Okay, lots two, one through four, will meet the dimensional lot requirement for the R2 district and will have frontage on a proposed cul-de-sac off of Patricia Avenue. The applicant appeared before the technical review. The applicant appeared before the technical review committee on October third, two thousand and nineteen, and a copy of the TRC comment is attached for us to review. Also attached is UEI review letter number one dated October twenty-eighth, nineteen, for your review speaking to us. The applicant appeared before the planning board on this October twenty-fourth meeting, twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, and the application was tabled till November twenty-first meeting. The application was subsequently tabled for the January twenty-second meeting, pending submission of revised plans to give the applicant the opportunity to appear before the Conservation Commission before returning to the board. Revised plans and supporting documents dated twelve, two thousand and nineteen have been received and are currently being reviewed by the town staff under Underwood Engineers, and Underwood Engineers, and are enclosed for our view. The applicant appeared before the Conservation Commission at the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting, and a copy of the recommendation is also enclosed. I've also enclosed materials from the applicant that support the request for the conditional use permit. Application is requesting a waiver from section seven point four point ten of the board's site plan review and subdivision regulations that requires a high-intensity soil survey. Letter dated December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen by Christopher York is enclosed that explains the reason for the request. However, I did inform Mr. York, he should provide rationale for each of the waiver criteria listed in section thirteen point seven. At this point, I believe, I will, at this point, I believe he will have it for the meeting. In the event the board decides to take action on the application, I've prepared suggested conditions for approval. The floor is yours.
My-
Unless you want me reads more, no?
Well, yeah, just skip right through. Good evening, thanks for having us. My name's Ian Winter. I'm here on behalf of I S Realty Trust, along with Henry Boyd from Millennium Engineering, as well as Chris, who actually is the one that created the responses to the committee. As it was mentioned, we did go in front of the Concom last week. The only two provisions that they asked were the fertilizer provision and also the maintenance on the detention pond, which we've already, we've already covered. So now I'll introduce Henry Boyd, and he can explain the rest of it.
Good evening, Board. I'm sorry to see that Dave isn't here, he's not feeling so well, and I'm firing on about three cylinders myself, so I hope I don't pass out on you. Do my best.
So do we.
Going close to the hospital, so. As Ian said, this is essentially an extension of Patrick at Patricia Avenue. The roadway, when you continue around the cul-de-sac for total length is, I believe it's about five hundred and eighty feet. There is four, five-point-six acres here on this lot. Currently, there is no access off of Patricia Ave, other than the right-of-way for Patricia Avenue ends at our border. That's how we have frontage. So we have fifty feet of frontage on Patricia Avenue, but the access has always been provided to the existing home off of a right-of-way through Linden Street, from Linden Street. That house will be on lot five, as Dave mentions in his comments. One of the great things about this is it's close to a significant wetland area here, and it's currently on septic system. So one of the things that we'll be doing is we're actually going to be tying this septic system, it will be abandoned, it will be tied into the new sewer system. You guys may remember, you should have remembered, that there was a project last year where a sewer easement was taken across, what is Ian's property, for the new development that was on, at Linden Woods here. They had significant problems with the existing sewer from that site when there was flooding down on Linden, if everybody remembers that. So this was a great way to alleviate a lot of that stuff and have it gravity-fed through the new sewer easement and then to the existing sewer main that's on Patricia Avenue. So the sewer is currently installed and functioning, or will be functioning for those units that are on that site. The cover sheet simply just kind of goes over what I mentioned. The existing condition sheet, which is the next one, shows the raw land. It does show where the sewer easement comes in. So currently, the manholes aren't exposed out here, but the main is in, the manholes are in. We just have not set the covers, because they won't be set until the new road is put in, and they'll be set at grade. But this is where it comes onto the site, it's twenty-five feet wide. It has essentially a ninety-degree angle here, there's a manhole here, and then it goes out and ties into another manhole here, and then into the existing manhole that is in Patricia Ave, and then takes it away. You'll see that the house is, the existing dwelling is centered over here. That will continue to receive its access from its right-of-way that's received off of Linden. A lot of the tree clearing has been done on the site. I think before these guys bought it, there was somebody that come in and logged a significant amount of trees off of the site. One of the things that we're going to try to do is before construction on the lots begin and after the road begins, we're going to stake the lot lines, so that we can try to save any mature trees that do exist out there, those healthy trees that will grow up on the lot line, so that we don't have to cut more than we have to. The property essentially has a high point here, which drains back this way, and then it drains toward this way. There's a wetland here that's separated by the driveway, there's a finger of wetland here, and then there is a wetland on the northerly, the northeasterly corner of the site. As Ian mentioned, and also the chairman read, that we were at the Conservation Commission last Tuesday evening, where they voted in favor of granting two waivers that we requested. The main concern for the waivers were is because that we were working in the wetland buffer zone. Primarily, they had a concern about the roadway itself. Now, keep in mind, there's already been work within the wetland buffer because of the aforementioned sewer line that went in. However, that doesn't, or didn't include any pavement or those things that this new roadway will have. So you'll see that we have a defined point at which the road can be continued. We can't deviate from where that is. This is where Patricia Ave is, so that's where Patricia Ave has to continue onto our lot. We've gone immediately into a curve, and that curve basically is as small or as sharp as we feel comfortable designing from a safety standpoint. I like sharper curves on roadways, especially residential roadways, because it takes the curse of speed out of them. And generally, people are slowing down anyway. But it's a seventy-five-foot centerline radius, which, as I said, in residential roadways, is small as we want to go. One of the other things that we've done is Patricia Ave is actually quite wide. In some spots, it's nearly thirty feet wide. We've taken that and narrowed that down as much as we can to get to a twenty-four-foot roadway. But the concern that the Concom had was why do you have to be within the wetland buffer? Well, obviously, a straight projection of Patricia Ave would run right into the wetland itself. We're not asking for any wetland fill on this site, it's simply buffer impact, which will be restored and planted. We've hired, in my opinion, one of the best wetland scientists that we can have, in Mark West. You should be familiar with him, he helps you with your town forest mapping and those things. So he has put together a very robust planting and restoration package to ensure that the wetland isn't harmed. But our justification for this was that we go as sharply as we can and then turn back. The other part of this is the standards of the right-of-way. The right-of-way has to be of a certain size, so that the fire truck can negotiate. So I won't bore you with all of the detailed sheets, but I would like to get to the grading, so that you can see what's happening here. One of the good things about Exeter, and I commented about this, and I actually complimented the planning, the Conservation Commission, is that your cul-de-sac standards allow for an open cul-de-sac in the end. A lot of towns, like my town of Seabrook, I still have not been able to convince them to do away with it, and they have this great big massive black surface. The DPW claims that it's easier to plow where those things, but it causes a lot more heat island effect. There's a lot more sanding, salting when it's time to overlay the road, it costs a lot more, and it's just not necessary. So I think it's great. We've done some of these projects in Hampton, where they're actually, the town has worked with some of the neighbors to allow some low-growth planting, and the people in the neighborhood actually take ownership of that, even though it's within there. They have certain abilities to do that, so that was a great thing. The road essentially comes up to a high point and then pitches back, so all of the, the drainage is controlled by curbing, so it can't run off to the wetland areas. You'll notice that all of our grading stops before we get to the wetland, so there's no wetland fill. There are a series of catch basins here on either side, as the road is crowned. So the beginning part of the roadway pitches this way to a low point, and then it raises back up to the high point. I think it's about station four plus fifty, and then pitches back this way. There's also a catch basin here, because the crown continues around the cul-de-sac surface, so that all of the roadway drainage is funneled to the catch basins, and then into the manholes, and then into the retention pond area. There was a lot of question about what happens with the water. Are you putting water off-site? We're not allowed to do that. In fact, one of the things through the, there was a lot of comment, the TRC really does a good job. They're very, very thorough. In fact, your towns, TRC had more comments, I think, than Underwood had, the review agent. So they do a really, really good job, to be commended. So all of those things have been addressed in both Underwood's comments, the planning board's, the TRC comments, and the Conservation Commission, we've addressed them all. As Dave mentioned in his letter, we had those finished and we submitted them, but we're still waiting for final comment, but there was nothing that we disagreed with. We agreed with everything and revised the plans accordingly. One of the things that we're talking about is that, you know, everybody's seen these great big storm events now. So we have to design for a fifty-year storm, but we all have to, also have to include these extended or much larger rain events than the northeast. So we're talking ten- or eleven-inch rain events, that this is designed to take care of. So not only do we make sure that the water is controlled the rate, but the volume, but we also now are treating the quality of the water, so that before it gets into a wetland area, we want to make sure that it's treated. The other impact that we had to get the waiver from, or the impact within the wetland buffer, was here. You'll notice that there's a wetland system that's off-site, but it encroaches us ever so slightly here, so obviously the buffer continues around it, so there is some grading work, the emergency spillway of the retention pond. Also, the grading for the downslope berm is within there. But the quality of the drainage system obviously is intentioned and designed, so that the wetland itself is not harmed. So work within the buffer seems to make sense. It's all natural material anyway, it's just soil, grass, and stone. So it's not as if there's something in there that's man-made or constructed. It's constructed, obviously, by man, but of natural materials. All of the houses on lot one, two, and four, we actually also have stormwater infiltration, so the rooftops are infiltrated into stone strips, so that doesn't run off-site or into the roadway. The only place that we couldn't do that is because we had a relatively high water table and some soils that weren't so great was on lot three. There was some more clay-type soil. So that, that water from the rooftop runoff will actually make its way down into the drainage system sheet flow over the grass. So a lot of that, that loam will infiltrate that. A lot of it doesn't infiltrate as well as on the other lots. Other than, I would mention again, is that we've got an easement across here for lot five, actually, to pump their sewer, to get rid of that septic system. But I think that's about it.
Questions for now?
Could you find out which street lights?
Um.
It's a little hard to see in the distance.
It's right here, actually, Jennifer, just one.
I have a comment, Henry. When we did a site walk on this, and whoever did the logging in there just did a sloppy job. So there's some few logs hanging around out there. I'm not sure if it's possible to do a little housekeeping in that area without disturbing everything.
Yeah, I wasn't real impressed with it either, but
Yeah.
Not a lock, so.
Give it fifty years, it'll rot, but, you know, it just might be- Some of that's pretty big stuff. Yes, it is.
If you ask me how to dig a pail of clams, I'll show you, but logging is not my business.
But that was basically on lot three.
Yeah, it's a mess out there right now, and Ian kind of knows that, but we've been careful about what we do do out there.
I know, you're limited in what you-
Absolutely, so we're well aware of it. That, the point of this, obviously, it's going to be much more beautiful than it is now.
Yeah.
I agree, Lang, they did a, kind of a sloppy job.
My other question is, our addresses, this always comes in as a Linden Street project, say, wait, 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 it's off Portsmouth Ave. I mean, Patricia. Is that street going to change its name? Or is it going to be Patricia Street Extension? Or don't you know?
I think it's just going to be part of Patricia Avenue. Those are usually things that are worked out with the postal service, honestly, the names and obviously nine-one-one and those things. But I think it simply will be Patricia Avenue.
So your intention is to have, yeah.
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
I have two more questions.
Yes.
So you mentioned that there are, unfortunately, I didn't make it to the site walk for this, and I've driven by the site, but I haven't actually walked around in there. So there are some existing trees still out there that you mentioned, that are mature. So those, those don't show up in the survey?
Well, we actually show, unfortunately, they didn't leave, really leave anything that was magnificent.
Right.
They kind of took it out. And they left a bunch of stuff that wasn't really great. They left some pines, which, if they're lone, they may be dangerous. We do show, best we can, the existing tree line on the site, right here. But a lot of this is just kind of the trees that exist. They cut through here, but they have really gone in there and taken the majority of the handsome things out. My point was, is that I always, I used to have a developer that I worked for quite a bit, that I really didn't like to work with, and he would just clear-cut the entire thing. And it took forever to make it look like a nice subdivision. And then there were other guys that we worked with that we would talk to them about, you know, staking lot lines to leave trees. Unfortunately, we can't do that as well here, but there still are some trees out there. So these better developers would actually have us, pay us to stake the lot lines before they cleared the lot lines, and they could very easily see, here's a great tree. So when the houses were built and the road were built, it looks like it had been there for twenty-five years. And that was a great thing. I don't think that we can do that here, but I've already talked to Ian, and they're willing to have us stake it first. Also, for the, the butters, to the parent parcel as well, so that we can see that. So they'll be clearly marked, and anything that's close to the lines, we're going to leave.
So I appreciate that you want to try to keep the nice-looking trees or anything that's sort of left.
Yeah.
Kind of keep some of the natural character of the site. That's great. We have, we do have a requirement in our regulations that any tree that's twenty-inch DVA diameter, breast height, or bigger, is surveyed. So I'm assuming those are all gone, since they're not showing up on the survey? And there's no waiver?
It almost kind of looks like Nagasaki. Not now, Nagasaki looks great now, but after the bomb. It's not good, and Lang's description of how it was done wasn't that, well, that good, you know?
Two years, it'll be green.
Yeah. I just, I think that there may be some things left out there that we can save that will mature into stuff that they have left. But unfortunately, I think those trees that your ordinance is really trying to identify are gone.
So I have one more question about trees, which is you do, you are showing street trees on the site, which is great, to kind of, I think, help compensate for some of those that were taken down, and then also, you know, they provide a nice neighborhood feel once they mature. And I was wondering what the species of those street trees were going to be.
Chris, what are those? Do you know what they're going to be?
A little maple.
Which plan? So we only say that they're going to lose their leaves, we don't say what they are?
I thought someone said maple. Well, again, as I recall in the site walk, some of the, I'll call it sewer work, they planted some trees, supposedly still in the burlap balls that can be moved. And those trees are kind of nice young maple trees.
They did plant them, Lang, and they're there. I think some of them, because of our work, we may have to move them or shift them or replant them.
Apparently, you can do that, I don't know.
Yeah. They did do it, they were supposed- Yeah, they did do it, they were supposed to, and they planted them along the easement.
Yep, okay.
So something similar to that.
Yep.
Maple trees?
Yeah, I would, so I figured you might say maple trees. One thing, I just want to, if you could consider something other than maple trees. A few years ago, the town did a survey and found that like eighty percent of the trees planted in our town are maple trees, and which is actually kind of dangerous because if there's a, something like an emerald ash borer that comes through that's wiping out all the ash trees now, that comes through them. There are certain pests that attack maple trees, and if they start getting out of control with climate change and all that, then, you know, all those would be dead.
Do you have a suggestion?
So we want to encourage diversity. There's, I mean, I could list forty different species of trees right now that would be good alternates for street trees, so you don't have to worry about...
Chestnuts coming back.
Elms are great.
At the meeting last year, when you approved the sewer line, there were actually four trees that were mentioned. I believe the developer that went through and actually finished that project just did maple. So I believe the idea is to actually include the other three that were mentioned and requested at that meeting. Just to break it up a little bit, yeah, because it'd be, yeah, they went, they went the easy route. But no, we, yeah, we absolutely get that. So the plan is to kind of stick to the four that were requested at that meeting and just to kind of...
I do remember that conversation.
Yeah, like, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know, but...
So we'll have to look into it and make good on that promise.
Thank you. And then I have one, sorry, one more question, and then I'll...
I thought she said two, this is like six.
This is, but it's not a tree question, it's about the sidewalk. I noticed that the sidewalk does not connect to lot four. It looks like in the drawings it doesn't connect to lot four.
It kind of goes around, yeah. It, I guess it doesn't. It makes its way to the end of the cul-de-sac.
I'm just wondering if maybe that it could continue to lot four because it seems a little bit unfair for lot four to not have a street connection.
I suppose it could. I'm not even in favor of sidewalks on these streets, to be honest, but it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere. You'd have to walk a long ways, but I guess it would be filling in this section, so we can show that.
That's it.
Okay. Anybody down here in the Southern Alley, yeah?
I got something I was asking. Wanted to see if Mr. Boyd could comment on. Henry, you have the letter from Kristen Murphy from January sixteenth, Conservation Commission, regarding the wetland waiver. You have that?
I haven't read it yet, Aaron, honest.
Okay. Why don't I give you my copy then?
Sure.
Because she mentions a couple of potential requirements. I just wanted you to comment on that.
Right, and I think that's what Ian was talking about earlier, the two points that they had. So there's a requirement, they had talked about specifically fertilizers within the wetland areas or these lots. And I had made a suggestion that maybe even when the creation of the deed, it's actually cited within the deed that they're restricted to only those fertilizers are allowed, that chemicals aren't allowed. So I think they like that suggestion, so we're perfectly willing to do that. And then the requirement of the deed restrictions, similar method to ensure stormwater infrastructure is maintained. This is something that came up, and I was just kind of throwing this out there, kind of at the town, because I didn't know how you've been doing this, but we do a lot of work in a lot of other municipalities. And one of the things that we assisted Hampton with is that they don't have the forces or the money to keep defending more and more infrastructure. What's odd about it is that the town, if this becomes part of the town roadway system, and that's the intent of it, that drainage infrastructure is there to protect and preserve the roadway. So there was a statement made in Hampton, for example, by the old town manager, says, "We don't want anything to do with it. You have to maintain the drainage," which is fine, which the homeowners association here would do as well. So the town doesn't have that responsibility. But I cautioned them to think about the fact that it may be written and deeded to the town that the town doesn't have the responsibility to defend it, but they have the ability and the right to do it if it goes into disrepair. Because if it's not, if it's not done properly, the road is at jeopardy. So what it does is it simply gives the town the ability to hire somebody or to do it themselves and then charge the homeowners association. If somebody comes in here and makes promise about a subdivision, they're going to do this and they're going to do that, and then they don't, the town shouldn't have to be stuck with it, the townspeople. So I think it's just an easy way to say, the town doesn't have the responsibility to do it, but if you don't do it, we're going to do it and we'll charge you for it. So that was something that should be identified and written into the homeowners agreement that we talked about.
So your comment is essentially that you and the applicant support both of these requirements of an approval?
I think they come about because we had brought them up.
Yeah, okay. Great. I think you're right, spot on with that issue regarding maintenance as well.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Absolutely.
On your plan, you have suggested planting two-inch caliber trees as the trees in front of the houses. And looking back at the notes, I think that was what Dave threw out as a potential size for trees. That's really tiny, and I'm just wondering if it's, if you would be open to putting in at least a three count, three-inch caliber? I mean, those are tiny little trees and just for their own health and ability to survive, I think.
I guess I'll speak to the, I guess if, I don't think two inches of breast height is a small tree by any means. I think three, you start getting into a financial burden that'll, the trees that size get pretty expensive. I don't believe the trees that were put in there now are actually technically two inches of breast height. So we would like to put ones that are actually two inches, which are pretty substantial. You're talking about as much as fifteen feet tall, I don't think. I mean, once you start moving trees much larger than that, it gets cost prohibitive. I think two inches is fair because we're also trying to make the effort. Like we mentioned, they kind of went in and took out everything that was good. We're trying to keep everything, because there's a couple of them in there that are five, six inches across that are nice enough. And we're going to try to keep them, well, you know, they've been stuck in the woods. They haven't been pruned, they haven't been kept up over the last years, obviously. But what we want to do is try to maintain what's there because of how difficult it is to get trees of that girth at that location. You know, it's, you're either spending fifty thousand dollars or waiting fifty years. So I guess, you know, we have to weigh both. So that's why we're trying to get in there and see what's salvageable. And then, I think, to be fair, I think two-inch trees, to get back to the ultimate point, is it's a fair-sized tree as long as we do what we told them to do.
I think we've done, in the past, I think we've had three-inch trees. I can't, in my mind, go back to those projects where that was requested, but it would be nice if they could be a little bigger. In our site and subdivision regs in nine seventeen-two, we do request that the center of the cul-de-sac is landscaped. And I don't see any, there's nothing, I don't see anything in the plan that indicates what your plan is for that.
Yeah, we really haven't selected what it's done. We anticipate a few more minor comments, and that's something that we certainly could look at. We talked about that a little bit at the Concom. Whereas I don't think the town's going to maintain it. So if it's going to be something that the neighbors are willing to do, we don't want to plan anything that needs continual care. And whatever we do, it needs to be low-growth because we have, there's children out there and somebody coming around the cul-de-sac, even though they'll be going slow. We want to make sure that there's visibility for the driveways backing and anything. So maybe some perennial garden, low-growth type of stuff or something like that. But it would be intended to die back because there is, it wouldn't grow and get high.
So you're not going to have snow storage there?
There will be, and that's why we're not proposing, like, great big bushes or anything else that the snow would kill.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't live in this particular neighborhood. In Blackford Place, they have a drive that's about like this and probably the same number of houses. And they actually have some probably cherry trees. I think there are two or three of them. So they're leggy, and you can easily see through them, and they look nice. It's just a nice visual at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Glenn, can you use your microphone, please?
No, I'm sorry. It's, I don't see that there's a visibility problem.
We could go look at that. What did you say it was?
It's Eno Drive in Blackford Place.
Okay, well, we can look at that, I guess.
So take a look at that and just see.
I think it's way bigger.
No, it is, I don't think, well...
Three and a half. Start at four, Glenn, you'll get three.
What you can be sometimes a habit.
Not in the fighting mood tonight, but...
No, I'm trying to honestly Google the cost average because obviously, I don't, I'm not in charge of paying for the development. My father is. I don't want to commit to anything here that's going to cost him a fortune and then I get written out of the will, so I don't really want that, so... No, but I don't see a problem with that. The biggest concern we had, especially in front of the Concom, was putting bushes too close to the side of the road because it will be a nice spot to put all that snow. Because right now, at the end of Patricia, like, I live on Thelma, right down the street. They do just kind of dump all the snow right in front of the Mayo's House, and it kind of just builds up there and then eventually it melts away. That center island will be a nice spot for it to go. So if we keep everything centrally located, the snow shouldn't, I hope we don't get that much snow, shouldn't damage that stuff. So that's not a problem, but we want to keep it as minimally maintenance-ed as possible because that just gets expensive for everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
Just philosophically, I guess, I don't know how else to put this, but I, you know, this site has taken a beating and, you know, we're doing our best in town to try to, try to invigorate and make, kind of mitigate what has happened on lots of properties that have been cut down. And this has been, this has certainly been cut to the ground. So I'm coming at you with this perspective of just wanting to try to, try to make up for what has happened. And, you know, if it's asking for more trees or bigger trees, or that's why I'm, that's why I'm making these comments.
Absolutely, yeah, it's, they're fair questions, they're fair points. Obviously, we want to get something to kind of finish the neighborhood. We think cul-de-sac is a nice endpoint as opposed to just a strict dead end as it is right now. Our end goal, you know, we've, my family has always lived in town. We're not trying to come into town and create something and then leave. We want it to be something that we can be proud of. I have to live in the neighborhood. I don't want angry neighbors mad at me because...
Because they know where you live.
Yeah, exactly. They know where, yeah. I've got a couple of kids in that neighborhood and I want them to still be able to go to their friends' houses. So, you know, like, we don't want to burden, we're not looking to burden any neighbors. We're looking to make it. We also want it to be economically feasible. We're not putting six-hundred-thousand-dollar homes at the end of the road. We want it to fit into the neighborhood, and so we're trying to do it as cost-effectively as possible.
Question? What's the property right below? It's all treed now, would...
It's forested.
Who owns it?
McCoy.
So it could be developed?
It has this potential for it.
The stormwater structure that has an emergency spillway headed in that direction? Is the sheet flow going across that from property to property now that that's...
Yeah, one thing about water, it always does what it's supposed to do. Always gets to the lowest point. So the water currently access the site here, if you look at the existing conditions plan, you'll see that there's basically a draw in the contour. So the high points here, water actually very flat here. It pitches slowly this way, but most of it pitches down into here and that same discharge point. So we've sized that pond, resized it based on the big rainfall events to ensure that that water is not coming off at an increased rate. So, but it is at the same point. If it does get released, it would go off at the same point.
But all in all, it's probably a better situation. Will be a better situation.
It's a whole lot better situation because remember I told you that out here, there's a septic system? And it's pretty close to the wetland area. And remember I told you there's a high water table there? So it has to be better. Has to be better.
I have a quick question. At the last meeting, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce the name. I think it was Mr. Hipkis who made some comments just about screening between his lot and the new house that would go onto lot one. And I don't know if there, I also wasn't able to be at the site walk, but are there trees there now that would protect him or...
There are some mature trees that are close to the line. I can't tell you exactly how many are there, but one of our concerns is to stake that line out with intermediate stakes. And I'm not sure, I don't live there, so obviously, they're better equipped to talk about it than I am, but...
Yeah, one of the, yeah, and we had spoken to the candidates. We had mentioned that we want to kind of keep as much of the garden that's already there. And then Mark West had actually come up with some smaller bushes as well to create some screening that would be actually behind the rain garden. But actually, I think Mr. Brown had mentioned. Right now, we're looking at about two hundred square feet of rain garden between lots one and two, the two that are closest to his property, to help any, you know, we're hopefully, we want everything to be graded towards the retention pond. But anything, you know, obviously, again, water will go downhill. It will be grading away from that house. So the idea is for us to design the rain garden, but we haven't had a full design yet because we want to see which trees we can keep. So we're going to design it around those with Mr. West's help. So, but yeah, there are, it was a continuation of the same bushes that'll be used as a buffer to the wetland. Will be on the other side because they're thirstier, and they also provide the screening that we would need for privacy.
And that rain garden also gives you more groundwater recharge and treats the water as well, so...
Okay, let's open to the public for any comments. So if someone in the public would like to come to this podium, please introduce yourselves, so our viewers at home will know that you're speaking. Anybody like to make any comments? Because we've got a little caucus going over in the corner there.
Thank you. Senator Hipkis, fourteen Riverbend Circle and a butter of the proposed property. And thank you, Glenn, for bringing up the tree comment. That was actually one of the ones that we still wanted to make sure were addressed. So the low-line shrubs are great. What's there currently for trees, the folks that were able to make it to the site walk, are all mature pines, you know, ninety-plus feet. There's no, all of the visual break between our property and that spot that's now been clearcut, all of that's been removed. We would like the consideration of some trees to be put back after the development is done, some medium-height trees. We have like a Japanese maple, maple, but different species of maple, you know, that hits that twenty-to-thirty foot mark. So it takes up a little bit more visual space, so a little more buffer there. The other main point that we had was with the graded runoff from lot one, obviously not, you can't build the lot this way, so all of it drains towards the pond. The rain garden that you speak of isn't on our plans, I think. Is it that triangle shape actually in between those two lots?
We haven't actually, is it okay to address them?
Yes, certainly, but use the microphone, of course, please. Sure, take that one. That works.
Don't want to steal his. We haven't actually spaced it yet, but I would imagine that it would be mostly behind and on lot one, which is great, adjacent to your property and here. But this is one of the lots that all of the rooftop runoff is infiltrated. So there shouldn't be any runoff coming onto you. That, we do have a decent water table depth here, so the rooftop will be infiltrated. And then obviously, with the backyard, it's going to be lawn. So there shouldn't be any runoff coming off of there at all.
Okay, because one of the things, I think Peter mentioned last time was, you know, in the wintertime, we get really hard freezes, right? So a rock... in the wintertime, we get really hard freezes, right? So a rock trench, when it freezes over, it's not going to take any additional water. We're seeing, you know, odd seasonal patterns where our January thaw, instead of it just getting up to around forty degrees, it's now getting up around sixty degrees. The ground's still frozen, but everything's melting. So things that are like a trench in the ground or rocks, those are probably still going to be frozen. We're still going to have a lot of runoff. We just want to make sure that there's at least some mitigation there to, to account for that.
Yeah, and, and anything like that would, would run into that, that rain garden. It'd have to be a significant rain event with a, with a frost that oversees it. I'll never stand here and say it could never, ever happen, but it's unlikely because of not only the, the trench. That trench is two feet deep. Now, we can get frost to four feet deep in, here. We've even had some winters, it's brutal and it's been, had water mains crack and break at four and a half feet deep. But in most circumstances, you're not going to see any runoff like that. I think that's the reason that we did talk specifically about the concerns that you had on your site, though, to add that rain garden for some more plants and some more green and some more possibility to capture runoff, so.
In the tree buffer. Very. It's, yeah. That's our biggest point.
So I, I'm going to have to work with Ian on the tree buffer thing because I don't know what I'm allowed to say about trees and what I'm not allowed, because he doesn't even know. But, but I'm, I'm sure that you and he and his dad will work with you to, to that end. So they want a nice neighborhood.
Right.
And we don't want Lot One to see you.
Yeah, they really don't.
It's usually beneficial.
Right. Yeah, they really, they really don't want it. It'll increase the sale value, everything. So, you know, it helps. So, yeah. That's our tall thing right there. So. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Don't look behind the curtain.
Okay, well, let me bring it back to the board then. Let's see where we're at with this. Do we have more questions?
Maybe just a process question, given that we don't have the full design on the rain gardens. And Dave's memo says that town staff and Underwood are reviewing. We've got Underwood's response. Okay. So we've heard back from Underwood with their letter dated yesterday with their response. But given that we don't have the full design of the rain garden, we don't have, we do have the response from the Conservation Commission. I don't know if Dave has any additional comments, given his, what he wrote in the memo about town staff. Are, are we at the point of being able to, I'm just, this is a process question. Are we ready? Or do we not have all the information we need?
Well, we, we can, as you know, we have conditions anyway. So that's how we sometimes take care of the details, if you will, and then move ahead with the case. If we're not, if we don't feel we're ready with that, for instance, we really want to see the rain garden design, rather than saying that it's to be approved by the planning department, whatever, I think, whatever we're most comfortable with, I think is the answer to that.
I, I don't know if Peter's trying to say he doesn't think it's ready for a final vote. I, I would agree. I don't think it, I'm not ready to vote.
Not ready for, okay.
I'm ready to hopefully give the applicant more feedback as to what would get me personally to that point.
Okay.
Is that what you're trying to get to?
I, I think so. And I'm testing that with the rest of the board as a relatively new member, but.
We have done a sidewalk.
Right.
Yep. And the Conservation Commission has looked at it. We have with the response. So check those off the list, kind of, but yeah. Certainly if the specific things we'd like to see in, in the more detail, that's what they need to know. Yep.
So I guess I'd just say those, that rain garden detail would be something that I think we'd like to see, especially considering the butter's concern. And I will just note, I think it was December fourteenth, after we got two feet of eighteen inches of snow and then had a sixty or forty to fifty degree day with two inches of rain on top of it and had major flooding all across the seacoast. So we are getting these significant roller coaster swings and temperatures and, and significant flooding associated with them. So I totally appreciate your concern. And I think that's where having that detail about rain garden would be helpful.
So one of the things I, I see, I think drainage is a big deal. Something we take seriously as a board, it's something any qualified good engineer like Mr. Boyd spends a lot of time on. And they're required not to increase what comes from the site to your property versus today. Not fifty years ago environmental conditions. We are in the environment we're in. So what Peter just described, if you took water then, you take that same amount of water three years from now, that this is built out, they didn't, it's not because of this project. It's because the crazy environmental conditions. Generally, it improves, though, is what you find, versus what's there now. That's generally what happens. The maintenance thing that they've discussed is pretty important, that the stormwater protection infrastructure gets maintained properly. Because in my personal experience, when things don't go right, it's because that's not being maintained right. And I hate to tell you, it often falls on the town, not the property owners. Exeter, I know, worked hard to try to push that on to the property owners who are new owners in the project to maintain it because the towns tend to not have it in the budget to go out and keep all these swales maintained properly or, you know, police every one of them until there's a problem. That's been my experience. And I'm not saying that it is negative sleight on any town. It's just a reality. So that's one thing I think we have to be aware of as a board. I do think the rain garden detail would be really helpful. I think that plantings along the entries and the immediate of butters would make sense to get into more detail there. Maybe outlining the trees that you are talking about. I know you said three out of the four on the last project, but we usually get more specific than that. I think the prior planner, a couple planners ago now, would have had a lot of dialogue on the trees that were going to be planted. And that might take two or three additional meetings to get through. We're not doing that, but we are looking for detail. And I think it's important detail and I think it's a focus of this board. And this site has been abused. So it would be nice to see it restored. I think it's a good investment as well for the developer and ultimately the end property owner. If you do that early, I think it maintains the integrity of site and you get your money back easily on that stuff. Most property owners looking at a project like this, if they're coming in early and they see that you're taking the time to put those extra things into your project, well, their expectation of what it's going to be when it's done is higher. And although you're not trying to sell, you said, for $600,000 or something, the cost to get there is miniscule. I think the return is positive. So it's, it's a no brainer to do that. That's probably where I'm at. I, I'm pretty close to being ready to vote, but I think I would want those details myself.
Agreed. Well, would you like us to continue the hearing?
For, well, I don't want you to deny it because you're not ready to vote.
Right.
So.
That's not going to work.
So it, it appears that it's centered around the landscaping, particularly in, in the rain garden. We haven't had a benefit even to see Underwood's response to all of the revisions that we've made, either to be quite honest. So I don't see that there's anything in there that's going to be earth shattering or insurmountable. But I appreciate your concern and if we could be continued to, what, two weeks?
That was February fourteenth? No.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, lucky thirteen.
And, and understanding that, that if we address those things, you could be in a position to vote.
I would think so.
I'd like to add one thing to the list, if it's okay. The, I'm not seeing a detail for the light fixture. And usually we like to see that and we like to see the lighting.
Yeah, lighting.
Distribution and the preferences for full cutoff, dark sky compliance, light fixture.
So, yeah. So photo grid just at that spot.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to make sure that it's not, you know, I mean, in this case, I don't, given its location, it's not going to be.
We'd hope for like a strobe.
But, but we'd also like to see what the actual fixture is.
Pointed right at them.
So if that detail's good.
Yeah, sure. We'll, we'll add the structure and the, the illumines.
Yep.
Chen, I would say if you have any particular species you think would be appropriate, it's nice to give that feedback for trees.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's something that we could maybe, there's this new kind of tree team under the Conservation Commission now that I would prefer kind of consulting as a group and coming out with like an official approved list of, of species. It's not something I can just spout out right here. It's, it's.
You need your posse?
There's, well, you know, there's, there's lots of trees and, you know, there's lots of different.
Tree posse, the Exeter tree posse.
You know, for example, in this location, like, it's kind of hard to tell, like, are these, there's, there's street trees and there's yard trees. And with this plan, like, it's a little bit hard to tell it's labeled as a street tree. To me, a street tree is three inch caliper minimum. Because a snowplow is going to come by, push heavy snow against a two inch caliper tree and that thing's going to snap like a twig. So if it's a yard tree, if it's like in the yard and it's like a beautiful dogwood or Japanese maple, sure, two inch caliper, no problem. If it's up by the curb, I, I would go three inch caliper and then I would do more of like a canopy tree, an elm or a, I don't know, there's, there's so many, like, it's hard to.
I think, I think the plantings are mostly along boundaries, aren't they?
They're labeled as street trees. Dave's comments from October says yard trees. So that's why I'm a little bit.
Okay.
That's why I'm kind of curious, like, what is it? You know, it's, it's two different things. So.
Well, he, he's a big guy, but I promise I'll wrestle with him on the size of the tree and see what we can do about that and the species as well.
Well, it's, it, I'll, I'll go back to my other comment about the, the building on, earlier discussion, the building on where Brad's was. I mean, it takes a while for a neighborhood to establish itself. That's for the trees to grow, to get settled in and then get into the business of growing. So, and it takes years. I mean, I grow lumber and it takes twenty five, thirty years before I cut a tree down. And that, the good ones are fifty, sixty, seventy years old. It takes time. So, and you can't plant those puppies. You can't transplant those big ones, no. So, so the thing to me is, is the placement of the trees. So we know in twenty years, there's going to be room for that crown. And you're not going to have a whole bunch of trees crowded together. So.
And this is kind of nice because you don't have power lines to contend with. All your utilities are underground. So that's, that's one benefit. You're not, a lot of times we're planting trees on streets and you've got to plant these little understory trees because they can't grow.
But then again, with more severe storms, I think you've got to look towards the future. You, you don't need any of those huge trees because the house may get hit by those trees falling over. I mean, the pine trees are beautiful, but when they're out there by themselves.
The power companies actually have specific lists of trees that they want you to plant and that they don't want you to plant. Because they only grow to a certain height, but they're beautiful and they, they're hardy and some trees you don't want. I, I think we'll, we'll do a good job and we'll be ready.
Okay.
That, that meeting is three weeks.
Yeah.
Three weeks, not two. Unless, if you, you said the right date, what did you say?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, that's three weeks away.
Yeah.
Three weeks away?
Yeah. It is the twenty third.
Is that the right date?
Oh.
Three weeks, my friend.
Well, let's see.
Second Thursday.
It's the second Thursday in February, whatever day it is.
The thirteenth.
Three weeks away. Still three weeks away.
You got another one.
So.
Are you sure that you've really got a feel that we won't go through the same discussion the next time?
I, I think we're all set unless you throw, take another bite at the apple the next time we're here.
We're known for that.
Well, I, I guess, for instance, I, I, now, are you going to take care of the stump grinding that's left? Who, who takes care of that? And are there any suckers that might be?
I don't know if you know, my father actually owns a stump grinder, so he'll take care of it.
Perfect.
Running two of these? Now it's in stereo. This is real fancy over here. He actually.
Oh, he's failing.
Good. He's not feeling well. Give him a break.
No, my father has all the equipment necessary. We just haven't really gone in there too much because we're trying not to disturb, you know, most of the, the, the stuff that's down, that's in the wetlands, ideally, we need to at least knock it down so it's safe. Just because once people move in, you end up with, you know, kids that'll probably play in the area. But as far as the stumps and everything, obviously, yeah, it'll be cleaned up. The yards will look good. I don't know how many street trees we're going to have, but the yard trees will look nice. And, and actually, speaking to that, I do think yard trees are better than street trees because I feel closer you get to the street, the larger they eventually get, the root system can actually inundate the sidewalks and the streets and cause them damage. I'd, I'd rather them be away so they're not affected by plows, they're not affected by weather, and they don't affect the roads. I think that's something to take into consideration as well.
Can I go back and ask, remember when we approved the other development there was, do we recall whether there was any condition in that approval regarding what they did? I, I can't recall.
What they did? Yeah, there were a lot of conditions in that approval.
Well, but what I'm saying, if we had Dave here to give us some idea of what, what commitment had been made, if any, by that other developer.
You mean, what the sewer line?
Yeah. No, 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 no. But the, but there's a whole line along there, which is their property. And they clear cut that to the extent, they didn't leave anything.
Yeah.
To be fair to them, there wasn't, there wasn't much. The, the previous people that came in even bef, I think the ones that cleared that property already had an agreement with Morissette before my father purchased it to go in there. Kind of just, they were there, so just keep going. They're, they did a pretty good job of clearing it out. That, you know, that's actually the path that they took into Morissette's property to wipe those out.
But to his point, there's nothing on that lot.
Yeah, it's, no, it's, it's a clear shot and there's really not much, you can't put a tree there, obviously, because, but you can, you know, there, there will be bushes that'll eventually grow in there. Try to return as much of it to natural growth and not just grass, just to keep, you know.
It's secondary growth. That's junk wood for the most part.
Well, I'm not looking, I'm not a lumbered man.
Can it be a king's pine?
You can't burn it.
I can burn anything. Try harden.
However, let me ask Henry this question. The existing house, you're going to disconnect the septic and go to the sewer. Are there any other improvements you're going to do in that house with, or the road or anything that needs to be on the plan?
No. The only thing that's going to happen here is the abandonment of the sewer system and the new tie-in. That's it.
Yep. I just made, get that apple taken care of.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because, yeah, so to answer your question, Pete, if, if all you're, all we're talking about is the items that you've, you've raised here, I think we'll make you happy with, with what we come back with. And if you're satisfied to the limit of those things, I think we'll, we'll be okay.
Okay.
I think there was a sidewalk detail that I heard you might want to get to. I mean, there are some things we can make, obviously, conditions.
Sidewalk giving to the last house.
Yeah, yeah.
Just get rid of the whole thing.
Could try.
Well, what is your?
Try anything.
What is your, what is your position?
Start over.
Now, in, in fairness to that, actually.
Just start over.
In speaking, yeah, exactly.
Withdraw.
Why not? In speaking, would that be a town, because we're building it to town spec, would that wouldn't be, would that then be a town maintained sidewalk? Because the current sidewalks in Academy Estates are not maintained by the town.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Maintained by the trees.
Are you intending to make this a public road? That the town will take over?
Yeah, we're planning on it being continuation.
Then that is part of the infrastructure. I don't find that they get to neighborhoods in the winter with sidewalk maintenance.
Well, I've never actually researched this, but I had a couple block parties in town.
And they don't block.
I was informed that the town just doesn't, that part of the agreement of them adopting the, the estates themselves was that they would maintain the roads but not the sidewalks. So that's always been kind of the.
That's a big question. I'm not sure. Do you guys know?
Well, they don't do.
I haven't seen them do it.
Blackford Place, they don't do those. They probably don't.
Yeah, I don't think.
It does seem kind of foolish to do these gorgeous sidewalks and then leave them unmaintained. Because I can tell you right now, again, I live on Thelma, we have to walk on the road half the time. My kids are on bicycles and stuff because it's just the roots have taken over. Well, yeah, but when he's two, I have to push him over the thing. It's a lot of work for me, okay, sir? Let's think about me. Let's think about me.
So we have had, I live in a neighborhood with sidewalks too that they don't get plowed, but we have had like sinkholes form in the sidewalks and call Public Works and they'll come out and fill the sinkhole, so, I mean, if you've got.
I have to look into it, like I said, but that's just, it's rumor around the block.
But they're, they specifically, it's listed on the Exeter website, like, they, they do the sidewalks downtown, they're not gonna get.
For, for snow.
It's just like insane amount of work.
Yeah, it is.
Our taxes would just go crazy high.
Oh, they, they, and get high?
So bits and pieces of sidewalk out from the twenty-seven. We have sidewalk and then we have an open land and then we have a sidewalk.
Yeah, gotta start somewhere.
Well, you gotta start, yeah.
Okay, that's, but I just, I just want to be sure again, that you are clear as to what the board is now asking. And I underline now.
Lights, trees.
I think we're pretty clear.
Drainage.
Okay.
Think rain.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, uh, looking for motions then.
Yeah, our motion is ending.
Table this case, so, uh.
To February thirteenth.
February thirteenth at, at seven P M.
So moved.
Oh, thank you.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion on the motion?
Better, Henry.
Voice vote.
Yeah, I hope you feel better.
Those in favor, please.
Whatever second is with you.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Gwen?
Hi.
Thank you. Not high. No extensions, passes, thank you very much. See you again. Okay. Shift the paperwork here. Uh, next item is application of Great Bridge Properties LLC for site plan review of a proposed multi-use development. Proposal will include the construction of a four-story building with office space and non-residential uses on the first floor, multifamily residential use, forty-eight units, and the upper floors, parking and associated site improvements. Subject property is located at Two Meeting Place Drive in the C-two Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, tax map parcel number fifty-five dash seventy-five, and its planning case number nineteen nineteen, and let me see what Mr. Sherwood has for us here. I'm gonna skip the first paragraph because it's just said it. Some board members may recall a similar application presented to the, to the BRIT Board back in twenty thirteen by Felder Cool Properties LLC for an amended site plan review of Planning Board Case Number Two Five Two Two for a proposed multi-use building instead of a commercial retail office building as originally approved. This goes way back. A conditional approval and several extensions were granted for the amended site plan. Project was revised again in twenty fifteen with some revisions to comply with Wetland Buffer Regulations in place at the time. Again, conditional approval and several extensions were granted, however, the approval subsequently expired in June twenty eighteen. Ownership of the property was transferred to the new owners who are seeking approval for basically the same proposal. So if it looks familiar, you saw it before. Applicant appeared before the zoning board of adjustment at their October fifteenth, twenty nineteen meeting and was granted two special exceptions to permit the proposed construction of a multi-use structure on the subject property and allow an increased height of said structure not to exceed fifty feet, fifty feet again tonight. A copy of the Z B A notice of decision is included in the application package, and a copy of the minutes from the Z B A meeting are also enclosed for our review. Applicants not requesting any waivers from the board site plan review and subdivision regulations in event the board, and that's really all we need to, as far as they need to go. So. Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Do we have to accept this as complete?
Tell us that.
Is this a new, so it's a great.
Oh, this is a new case, isn't it?
Uh, move, reopen?
Uh, Dave says it's all ready to go, so, okay, I got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second, and those in favor, please, keep pressing aye.
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 The ayes have it. Now.
Good evening, my name is Steve Height with Civil Works, uh, representing the applicant for this project, uh, as we did for the past ten-plus years on this project.
Sure, the same face again.
Yeah, so, um.
He's so happy about that.
Well, we're here because it, the, uh, Mr., Mr. Felder had, uh, let the previous, um, approval lapse. So we're, we're back here for the reapproval of, of this project. Um, so we had met with, with staff several times and we also went to Z B A to get the same, uh, use variances that had been granted previously. Uh, we met with the, um, technical review in, uh, in December, on December nineteenth. We went through, uh, the plan set, we talked with engineering. Uh, and these plans have also been sent off to, um, to Underwood and Underwood has actually reviewed those and, and has issued a, uh, we call it an okay letter, uh, we addressed their concerns and, and I have copies of that, if you guys don't have those, copies now. Um, but just, just as a quick, um, overview, so this is, uh, this was a multi-faceted project as you, uh, from previously. This is meeting house road that goes out to a number of, uh, units out back, and this was the commercial with the residential above on, on the, on the road. And it has actually never been constructed, but it is actually pad-ready essentially. So all the utilities are stubbed into the project, all the, um, uh, the site had been remediated to, to allow the construction of the building itself. And with, with conversation with, with staff as well as the new, uh, owner, or new potential owner, to be owner, um, we had made some slight revisions to the site as well, because in two thousand nineteen, you guys have new stormwater rules, which we have, uh, actually modified our drainage to accommodate, uh, so that meets all the, all the, uh, the new M S four rules and meets all the, uh, stormwater, uh, management rules. It still has an alteration of terrain approval on it, which is still valid. Um, and what we would be doing with alteration of terrain is we would issue a, or request for a, uh, an amendment when, when the new owner purchases the property from Mr. Felder. So we have made two, actually only one, one, one change to the site itself, and I'll show you this, um, this is the old, this is the approved site plan from two thousand seventeen, and the one down here is the, uh, the new one we're proposing right now. And what we've done is we've actually reduced the amount of pavement on the site, we've reduced and eliminated eight parking spaces, um, and also a, uh, a loading zone on this side, and what we've done to accommodate that, um, is essentially, um, I'll move here. So what, uh, very specifically what we've done is we've eliminated parking spaces here and on the side over here. Um, these are, if you guys remember from many conversations and many, many discussions with the Concom as well as the planning board, this is the trailhead parking. Uh, one of the comments from T R C was provide additional signage, so we've added signage to the site to say trailhead parking ahead, and those, those are dedicated parking spaces. So what we had done as part of the, this redevelopment or redesign of this is we've actually reduced the, um, the, uh, amount of pavement on this parcel by about seven percent from what we had originally, uh, proposed and got, got approval. So the drainage itself, um, with the comments and from, um, from staff, engineering, as well as with, um, Underwood, uh, we've essentially shown and, and the, the application that you have now has all the data associated with it, which shows that we actually comply with all those, all those requirements. So that's, uh, that's kind of a brief overview of, of what we had done. There, there are, there is also one, there is actually one waiver that we're requesting. Uh, there are actually three that we actually identified and two of those, uh, um, that were stormwater related, which, which Underwood has, has indicated they're okay with as well. But the, uh, the parking spaces are, uh, are one foot shorter than what they now require. Um, we talked that over with staff, and those parking spaces all have, um, access, and I apologize, I do have a cold, so I'm gonna lose my voice here in a minute. Seems to be the time of year. Um, but anyways, so what we're asking for is a one, one-foot waiver in terms of the depth of the parking spaces themselves, which I think we have some support from, uh, from staff as well as from, uh, Underwood engineers. And that was, or specifically, because this is the parking lot that was previously designed, we met all the rules and regulations previously, um, and no one has a problem with, uh, reducing the size of the, the amount of pavement on the site, and since all, most of the parking spaces are on a parking lot or the sidewalk, or they're over hanging out across, uh, landscaped islands, we're not gonna have an issue where you have any, um, impact for anyone walking in front of them or by them. Um, so what, in your package, what we had done is when we went to T R C, we actually put together those, um, comments from T R C, and they're listed in here, if you want, I can go through those very quickly, would that be helpful?
Yep. Please.
Regulations that you know have, have changed since last autumn. Uh, bonding, we need to bond for rehabilitation, we'll talk to the staff about that, there's no issues with that. Stormwater regulations, we do make the N S A, uh, M S four requirements, eighty percent D S S removal, sixty percent nitrogen and sixty percent phosphorus, uh, removals. Also, one of the things that staff had asked us to do is file the P T A P, which is a U N H, uh, stormwater record, which is all, is also in your package as well, which, uh, Underwood reviewed as well as staff. The A O T amendment and extension, so A O T is good until May of two thousand twenty. Uh, our expectation is this is, gets approved and when revised property, we will ask for amendment, not ask for, we will file for an amendment with A O T, checking to enable the, uh, the owner, and updating them with the, uh, revised rating and drainage. You have, uh, some of the questions they had had, th- these are stormwater-related questions that Underwood had brought up and actually, uh, Jen Mates had brought up, and those are all addressed in, in the package you have, and that's what Underwood has reviewed. Um, and I'm sorry, did you, do you guys have their letter? This, dated. Three twenty-third? I made a bunch of copies if, if you want.
Sure.
Okay.
You should have them made.
Yeah, we have it.
You do? Okay.
We do.
All right, uh, another question that Paul Velozic had, the town engineer, had actually asked us about was, you guys had done a corridor study recently down where Continental comes out onto, uh, the road, and I guess it was contemplating at some point maybe a light down there. What his question was is, what's the volume of traffic that's being projected out there now and what would this, this project, in particular, what, what used, uh, meeting houses now, homestead houses, be adding to that? And so the, uh, the numbers of that is about fifteen thousand plus cars going down or expect going down the corridor. We're gonna add about, uh, sixty to that. Um, at peak, we're only gonna add about six, so we're, we're less than one percent of any increase, uh, that would be going to light, which actually from the V H B study had already anticipated, uh, future build out, so we're actually included in that and from what we had anticipated for the project, we're far less than what had been previously approved as well.
And that's including the down, the ground level, uh, stores or offices?
Yep, yep, everything. Yep, there's an office now, it's a twelve-hundred square foot office in the downstairs.
That's including the traffic, those first floors gonna generate.
That's correct.
Plus the tenants.
Yeah, exactly correct. So e- everything with this project here.
Counting everybody.
Yes, we did, and so we had provided that to Paul as well, uh, but that was one of his questions. Uh, parking, currently the proposed parking is nine by eighteen, all the parking stalls, um, or, um, nine by, I'm sorry, nine by nineteen is what the reg requires. These are nine by eighteens, we're asking a waiver for that, and I think staff had, had recommended approval for that. Utility conflicts, what we had done is since this is actually, this site is already, I can call it pad-ready site, we have a sewer connection stubbed into the site, the water, the gas, the electric, the telephone, everything is already there. Um, with this site, what Jen asked us to do is just make sure that we have, uh, everything taken care of and we don't have, um, anything running across sewers. We have all those identified. Uh, we did actually move one light pole, uh, when we eliminated the parking spaces along the edge over here, and so those have all been coordinated as well, so we don't have any conflicts that, that, uh, for the utility installation for what's existing or what we propose to put in there. Um, the additional signage, um, this came from, uh, D W, again, the original, I don't know, you guys don't remember the, the trail from way back when? So, originally, Concom, we had had the trail coming down across, going across the top of the detention pond, down through and so forth, uh, that's gone away. So we now have a sidewalk along the road and a sidewalk, sidewalk along front here, so it's the expectation that we want everyone to walk on the sidewalks and the signage in here directs you to the trailhead. So the trail actually exists down behind, um, the rest of the project as it is, so access, as you park here, you walk across the, uh, the paved area, parking lot, and you get into the trail system, so those are all still interconnected, so none of that's changed. Uh, the only thing that's changed is actually just add the signage. Um, lighting, lighting, these are all down shielded lights, we, there's a lighting plan in there, these are night sky compliant, uh, the same conditions that we typically do with all sites, uh, and everything we're part in, in Exeter, there's all that light details you'll see in, in the plans themselves. And then, uh, add a note to the plan, and one of the comments was, you know, keep the lights from like, uh, ten, ten P M to seven A M, uh, reduce some of the lighting. Um, since it is a residential use, um, you know, as, as, um, we had discussed with T R C, we need lighting, uh, twenty-four, seven, because people are gonna go from their, their, uh, parking spaces to the, to the, to the building. So, but other than that, that's really the only, the only significant change from the previous was actually the reduction of the pavement areas and just, uh, showing that all this, the drains that we already have, um, actually complied with, uh, all the new rules actually. And that's what, uh, what, what Underwood had actually, um, reviewed from what we had sent them. So. That's in a nutshell. I'm going into detail on any questions you guys have, but it's really, that, that was, uh, the extent of what we were, with the other.
Questions, thoughts, concerns, ideas, Gwen?
Just a question, I don't remember how this all came about when we first reviewed these, this project, but, um, was there something that, that drove the creation of the road that, that parallel on the, um, west side of the building that parallels Route twenty-seven? That, I mean, is that necessary?
Yeah, from, from, uh, because it's actually, it's a one-way coming or down cross this way. Uh, I think that was, as I recall, it was a conversation we had had with the fire department way back when.
I wondered if that was.
So, um, what we were doing is you have, you have, uh, major access on this side as well, this side, but now you have, you got access all the way around the building.
If it, just curious, if, if it, if the fire department hadn't requested that, is that something that you would see as being necessary from the standpoint of residents or business owners?
Um. Actually, probably not. I mean, if, there's really no need, it's just, it does give us connectivity around the building. Um, one, one of the uses previously had been contemplated at one point, if you guys remember, there was gonna be a drive-through, all, all sorts of stuff, so, um, that, that, that's kind of gone away. Um, but, you know, if, if, if that, that connectivity in terms of, uh, safety around the building makes sense. Um, so that's why we would maintain that. Does this help?
I, I totally respect the fire department's decision on that, I just, it, it, it's right next to the road, it just strikes me that it would be, that if you needed to get there, you could get there from twenty-seven and you wouldn't necessarily, I mean, it's right there.
It, this, this is, this comes around this way, it comes one way around this building like that, and we, we did that for several reasons, was to minimize the amount of pavement as well.
Which I love that you're trying to do that. I mean, from a cost perspective, it would be great for you and from, I think aesthetically, not to have a road there would be much more pleasing than, than having it, um, and we always want to reduce pavement, so. But I guess that's out of your control.
Yeah, there's, there's certain psych design items that we, we need.
Yeah.
And that, that's probably one that we would, we would, that we want to have.
Uh, are the residences, the occupants, the apartment occupants, are they in a separate part of parking? Are the store, from opposite, from the storefronts or?
Nope, nope, so this is, this is shared parking. Uh, the intent here is exactly that, so you're not gonna have, um, dedicated parking just for, uh, the commercial use and not have any, uh, residential use, so the intent is, and the need is, to, to, they would, they would be, it would be co-used. Um, and actually, uh, based on what, uh, Great Properties already knows, is that their actual parking usage is less than what most ordinances require, and so why we were, we eliminate, we were able to eliminate eight of, eight of the parking spaces was because of that. So we'd, we had reviewed that with, uh, T R C, we talked about that and showed them, uh, what those numbers are. We still need zoning, so all the code requirements in terms of that, we're not assuring waivers from, from Z B A. It's just instead of going more parking spaces, we actually reduced the number. Landscaping. So this, this, this landscaping plan ha- has been updated, so, uh, Robbie Woodburn has this, this, this is a brand-new landscaping plan. Uh, uh, she's, she's pretty cognizant about the different types of trees and plants and everything else, so. So, we have a wet pond, we have wet vegetation, we have treatment swales, we have infiltration ponds, we have, you know, we've got everything associated with, and you can talk about. And all that is integrated with that, with the landscaping plan that's actually in the plan.
Yeah, that was impressive, thank you.
Was that your question?
No, this, you may wish it was. And I'm not, by asking this, I'm not implying that this is what I would push for, but I, I just, has, has underground parking ever been considered? And I know you're on a site that has issues and it's been capped, I guess it's been capped.
So, yeah, so-
You probably can only do part of it, but-
Yeah, we can't do any of it, actually.
None of it could be, I couldn't-
So, part of the remediation of this site is when, when this, the reason why the building is the way the building is and the reason why this is exactly what's being proposed now is that when this site was remediated, certain areas had been, that, that the capped areas were remediated so that we could actually put the foundations and so forth in. So, we're not, we can't touch them.
Okay. I couldn't tell if part of the building was over it or if the whole thing was over it, but I-
Yeah, you, you, in the, I think probably the second or third sheet in your plan set, you'll see the closure plan.
Yeah.
And it pretty much encompasses pretty much this whole building area here. And you'll see some of the, some of the design features that we had had were to be able to keep lights and drainage out of the capped area as well. So we have a little bit of, you know, constraints associated with that as well.
Okay. I've got a couple more questions, but I'll wait. I'll wait if somebody else wants to come, I don't wanna-
John's taking a nap down here.
He's reading, very interesting.
Reading, excuse me.
We lost Aaron, where did Aaron go?
I had a question about signage. Is there gonna be any signage for the building itself? For the, for the office space inside the building or anything, or by the street or?
There's no, there's no pile-in sign proposed.
I guess we haven't really talked about that.
Yeah.
We, we would like to have some small sign out there as far as the, I should introduce myself.
Yeah, from Michael Feinbaum, thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Chris Davies, Raybridge Properties. So, I don't know if you remember, this is an affordable project. And I've lived in town for thirty-three years and I kept driving by that. And it just almost haunted me. All I do is affordable housing, but I've never done anything in Exeter. And I know how much this project is needed. This is a very challenging project. And I give Bob Felder a lot of credit because he tried year after year after year with drive-throughs and banks and this and that, and none of it worked. So I, I don't know why, but I thought I'd give it a try because I think this is a really good project. It's smaller units, there's eight efficiency studios, there's thirteen one bedrooms and seventy-two bedrooms. So this is gonna be for younger workers. And I think this is really needed in town here. And so, again, I've been doing this a long time. Parking needs, and this is just a little bit of information for you. In my twenty years, parking needs for apartment projects are rapidly dropping. So we have probably even now more parking than we need, but we wanted to meet the zoning requirement to do that. The last project we opened was sixty-six units. We ended up with, after full lease-up, fifty spaces. Now there were, we're, we're more in a downtown area that had good bus service as well. But for the first time ever, Uber is playing a role with especially our, our younger tenants and our older tenants. So, just a little bit of information for the board for going forward. So, I forget what the original question was, but hopefully I answered it.
Signage, yeah. Yeah, so, so typically with signage, whatever zoning is gonna allow us to put on there and for the signed package as well. But there will be something to show that it's a homestead house and you have a, you know, commercial use.
Oh, one thing I did want to say too is we're, we pared it down to one office. My office is currently in Portsmouth, I'm moving it into the building, so.
And what about the gathering spot next door to that?
That's for the, yeah, that's for tenants. A lot, all that space is, you know, the storage space, these are small units.
Yeah, most of the first floor is taken.
Yeah.
With that kind of stuff.
But the gathering spaces is for tenants. Office space for the management company is down there. And then office space for my company is down there.
Silly question, but how tall's the building?
It's not gonna be higher than fifty feet.
No, it's, it's-
Good answer.
It, it's actually defined on the, the architectural plans at the back there. I want to say it was forty-
I think you're right.
For four stories, we really need up to fifty feet today. So I wanted to get off to that last discussion because I have lived in town a long time.
See how this would look down?
Four stories, you need fifty feet.
It's part of the thinking of this whole stuff, I don't know what's gonna bring that.
And just, just for clarity as well, the height of this building, as you show, is exactly what was approved last time through ZBA, the first rounds as well. So, in terms of the look of it, we have some pretty good renderings of what it's gonna look like. That's extremely similar to what was previously approved as well. So, you know, Chris had made-
Nothing changed on that.
Yeah. So we're just trying to make sure, there's nothing different here than what we had previously, you guys had seen before, other than the site changes that we had made for those reasons.
And the board has changed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some of the board.
Hey, Gwen? I think the majority of the board.
Yeah, I think so.
Is still existing.
Excuse me? These are all, these are all affordable rental units.
Four of us, five of us. Five of us voted on this the last time.
How does trash work?
Ah, good question.
There's something going on with trash.
So, you, you do have, you do have trash pickup inside the building where the residents put that, but also, there, there's a shared, and this, this again goes way back. There's a shared system right here and it already exists. So that, that's the dumpster pad that works for these guys out back. This is Avesta and Rose and everyone else. And so this building uses that too.
And you're changing something about, it's got, is it, has it got chain link around it? Did I see something that was gonna be taken down or something was gonna be added on the detailed sheet? I can't remember.
Yeah, so, the, the details associated with is what's out there now. So it has the privacy slats, it has the man doors and the lockable gates and so forth. So, that'll be maintained.
There's some nice screening going in around this.
Yeah, it has set back a fair distance too. So it's not really noticeable when you drive down the road.
Okay. No, there aren't, there's no, no equipment on the roof, all your, no... It doesn't look like it from the rendering, but I just wanted to add-
There was on the last plan. And we're, we're not sure about that. One of the reasons this project didn't go forward, other than all the different ideas, it was just too expensive to build. So we're looking to make changes, you'll see on the, there's a mechanical room where we're gonna, you know, we're not going full electric heat and cooling like he did before, so.
Entertain the idea of solar panels?
If we can afford them, we will always do that.
Yep, great.
This whole project comes down to affordability. After we finish approvals here, then I have to apply for funding to New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, get in line with all the other projects, try to get the funding. And then we, you know, hopefully, we can make these construction numbers work. And if there is money for solar, we will always do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Be great.
Other questions, thoughts?
I have a question about the architecture.
Go ahead.
So I don't, I mean, so you're saying this, this architecture's all been kind of reviewed?
We didn't change it, we took a greenhouse off and I believe that was about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is what has been there, we didn't, we didn't make any change to it.
It, it's the same architect that had gone through that one as well as one up back.
I wasn't on the boards back when this was reviewed, so I apologize if this has already been discussed and everything. I guess something that's kind of bugging me is the west elevation. That, that's the elevation that's gonna be against Epping Road, correct? With the stair tower there and the little tiny windows, it just seems like it's, it just looks very like the back of the building right against the main, right against our main road, our main gateway road into town. And I'm just wondering if there's some way that like those windows could be enlarged or if there could be a gable or something put on or just, just something to make that look a little bit more welcoming in the facade? Because of, of the four facades, to me, that one seems like the most kind of like back of house, closed off facade. And I think it's just because that happens to be the stair tower. Or is it possible to just mirror the building maybe and get this nicer facade there? How much that would change it?
Boy, it would, at this point in the game, we can't, we can't make ma- major changes. Again, it's, it's so expensive doing this. And this, we don't have economies of scale like the buildings behind us, further down Meeting House. This is really small. And it's very challenging to make these numbers work. I can talk to the architect about possibly larger windows on that side.
Hide your windows and shutters.
Ask for others.
If you, just for clarity too, is your, your view is going to be from north and south? You'll be passing it, yes? And I think we, one of the, we had had quite a bit of conversation with yous about that as well. And so you're, as you're driving up the road, you're looking at this, this broad expanse here more so than the side. And as you come by and you're looking again on this side as you come down the other, because this is actually on a slight curve as it is. So, but, I mean, that's up to Chris in terms of if there's other architectural. But we, we had talked about that in terms of scale. Everyone uses a scale from architectural standpoint, but, you know, windows and scale and how it looks when you're, when you're looking at it as it references the direction. But, just so you know, we, we had, we had talked about that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I don't know, and I don't know if anything can be done if, if like, there's any way to like, I mean, I'd appreciate if you could talk to the architect to just see if there's like some way to break up the roof line or something, I mean, I appreciate-
The roof line, I'm pretty sure we cannot touch at this point. I will ask the question.
There are trees along Epping Road.
There are elm trees along Epping Road.
Hey, there you go.
Weeping willow.
Just not.
Weeping justa-
Liberty Elm. The, in the area to the north of the dumpster, again, I'm just looking at pavement, is that, is that already there or is that next to the road?
Yeah, so, this whole road is in, that's in, this, it's-
Apron right here exists.
You're on.
There you are.
So, yeah, so all of this pavement is already existing. This turnaround in through here, that, all that is already here.
Okay. Seems like that's not a really necessary finger of road, but maybe-
This one here?
Yeah, oh, to the right, to the-
This one here? That, that's the access to the dumpster.
To the dumpster. So that's where the, that's where the truck is coming in.
And the buses too, so what happens?
Turnaround that.
So, yeah, the school buses come in, use this, turn around, pick up the kids and leave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was actually way back when that was designed as the, as the bus loop too.
I forgot, I don't remember that, but, okay.
Well, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this? Have they opened it?
Anybody left?
Public? No, no, but were there two or three people out there? If so, ask you to step up and-
Or something out there, Dan.
Introduce yourself. And let us know what your thinking is. Seeing none, then I will bring it back to the board. Gwen, do you have anything of this?
Any other thinking or?
It seems like we've been looking for affordable housing, we've been talking about it an awful lot. We have twenty-six units?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Opportunity to add twenty-eight units without giving up, which has been approved before.
Less, less impervious surface than previous.
Right, I mean, yeah, there's a few things that we all probably like done differently, but at the end of the day, I think it's probably not a, a bad get for the town.
So one quick question, you requested a waiver for parking spaces. I'm just wondering about long trucks. I, I experienced them in like the shopping plazas and that sort of thing where it's hard to, especially when they got a trailer hitch on or something like that and they stick out a lot. Is there a way to accommodate, have some deeper parking spots in some places or something like? I don't know, it's just-
Well, good question. We typically will have, we, we address that if it's transient traffic, but this is really, you're, you're an owner, you live here or you're a renter. So you're not gonna have a lot of people coming in and out of here that don't know where, where this place is or what they're working, I'm sorry. They live here. So there's no one that coming in here. So, an eight by eighteen parking space or nine by eighteen parking spaces is relatively standard parking space as well. So, yes, you might have a pickup truck that has a hitch on it, but it, I'm not, you're not gonna have fifty of them or even twenty of them, you might have one or two. We, we don't really want to expand any of the asphalt that we have here in terms of the depth and that's why we're asking, because this, this was designed and approved when, when it was eighteen foot was the, was the, was the standard. And so we're just asking for that waiver for the nineteen. But, you know, maybe if they, if they back in to the parking space, there's no issue. You know, so that, that's, that's, if that's something that, that, you know, Chris would be policing anyways down there if they needed to. But, I really don't think that that would be an issue here. You just don't have a lot of transient traffic. And, and not that that specifically came up with staff, but what we talked about was because we have grassed areas on, on all the outside parking spaces, there's plenty of overhang room four for a vehicle. So if that's the case, they just back in.
And then maybe one more question, this is gonna sound, sound like a stupid question, but it gets at Gwen's question about the, and, and the fire truck access around the parking lot. Could you, are you limited in terms of another like curb cut on Epping Road for this? So you couldn't eliminate that front edge driveway just by getting another access around on the southern side?
Yeah, so, so going back to decades worth of conversations, everything else, this, this project actually widened Epping Road here and created a right-hand D cell lane in and added that whole sidewalk. And that was, you have a wetland down in this area over here and there was no way to get around here, just one, because of the graves that are here, as well as the fact that this is a capped site, we couldn't, we couldn't dig into it. So the common access for all of this was, and that's why that became like the main access. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Are we ready to make a decision or?
Wait to, this, I think the, if we're gonna potentially vote on anything, I think the applicant has to read out the waiver requesting properly.
Yep. There is a waiver request. And Dave spoke of that.
Okay, so the waiver is to section five point six point three point A, size and access. Can we read the entire thing? Okay. Each off-street parking space shall be rectangular, nine feet by nineteen feet exclusive of access drives or aisles and shall be of usable shape and condition. The planning board may grant a reduction in the size of the space if circumstances on-site, such as perimeter parking, which allows overhang can be provided. The entirety of the parking spaces are perimeter spaces with the exceptional ones up against the building, but there is a sidewalk there as well. We are requesting a formal waiver to allow eighteen-foot parking space length where nineteen is required. The criteria for meeting requirements of section thirteen point seven waiver is the site plan review and regulations for the town of Exeter, New Hampshire is as follows. Thirteen point seven point one, the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public safety, health or welfare or injurious to the other property. And eighteen by nine wide parking- An eighteen-by-nine wide parking space is normal size for a parking space, the availability of a one-foot overhang on spaces, as the ease of use while limiting additional impervious pavement, the space size will not be detrimental to public safety, health, or welfare because it is an adequate size to park and turn a vehicle in, limiting impervious area reduces stormwater runoff, which reduces stormwater impact to other properties. Thirteen-point-seven-point-two, the conditions upon which the request for waiver is based are unique to the property, are not applicable general, generally to other property. The, the property has a unique geometry, it is long and narrow and bounded by wetlands on the south and east, the geometry of the property lends itself to the proposed parking layout, where setbacks from the property boundary, the wetlands are maintained. Reducing the length of parking spaces from nineteen to eighteen are critical to meeting wetland and property line setbacks, and to providing a site geometry that allows for safe parking movements and functioning in appropriate parking spaces. Thirteen-point-seven-point-three, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out. Again, due to safety of the property, uh, it would be hardship to the owner to make the parking spaces nineteen feet long instead of eighteen, the site is constrained by wetlands and wetland buffers, and additionally, one foot onto four rows of parking would push the parking closer, closer to the wetlands. Uh, unnecessarily added, unneeded pavement would result in a less environmentally friendly site design. This would be a hardship to the owner and the community rather than a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulation were carried out, the language on the zoning ordinance appears to contemplate the situation and grants the planning board leeway to allow the eighteen-foot spaces if perimeter overhang is provided, as it is in this case. Thirteen-point-seven-point-four, granting of the wa- waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. The granting of the eighteen-foot long aisle is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations because the language in zoning, again, contemplates the situation and grants the planning board leeway to allow the eighteen-foot space if perimeter space overhang is provided, as it is in this case. Thirteen-point-seven-point-five, the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. The Town of Exeter zoning ordinance is amended through March two thousand and nineteen, section five-point-six-point-three-A, size and access, states each off-site parking space shall be rectangular, nine-by-nineteen exclusive of access drives or aisles, and shall be of usable shape and condition. The planning board may grant a reduction in the size of the space if circumstances on the site, such as perimeter parking, which allows overhang can be provided. The zoning ordinance provides for decreased size parking in this particular case. The master plan refers to stormwater management. Reducing, reducing the amount of pavement by decreasing parking stall lengths from nineteen to eighteen is a positive approach to stormwater management and helps facilitate the goals of the master plan by reducing pollutants and stormwater discharge. Page thirteen of the town, Town of Exeter master plan. And that's the off-street parking waiver. The other two waivers were actually stormwater, which, um-
Going to one at a time.
Yeah, let's do one at a time.
Thank you.
We'll want to discuss that waiver. Want to discuss the-
Parking length.
Parking space length. And I entertain a motion.
Problem is, we don't have our cheat sheet on the motion.
I know. We don't have cheat sheet, and that's all. Section, whatever it is.
It said five-point-six-point-three-point, did you say B, B as in boy, or?
Do you, do you want, you want this?
The regulation.
The regulation that you read right at the beginning.
So that we can make our motion properly with it, because it's not in our notes, and in, and not in our package.
Sorry.
Which is not your issue.
Got it.
It's the pink eye issue. Is it five-point-six-point-three-point?
Five-point-six-point-three is the off-street parking.
Okay.
As stated, Town of Exeter zoning, you want the zoning? No, you don't need zoning, you need site review.
Right.
Site review is thirteen-point-seven. For meeting requirements of section thirteen-point-seven, waiver of site plan review regulations for Town of Exeter is as follows. The off-street parking requirement in the zoning is five-point-six-three. I apologize, I don't know what it is for your site plan rules.
You get the book.
I, I brought zoning, not, not site.
You get the book?
I have it, if I can-
Saved.
Can that just be added? They were trying to get us pretty specific how we do these waivers.
Site review regs.
I have one. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, and you're just going to say whatever number it was.
The number you said.
Dave will add it. Dave will just fill in the one.
Right.
He'll know what we, it is.
Think better than I do. Well, salad tabs, man.
Here it is, I'm sorry, it's your site review regulations of nine-point-twelve.
Nine-twelve.
And then nine, and actually, yeah, so off-street loading pertains, I'm sorry, nine-point-twelve is off-street loading, nine-point-one-three, nine-thirteen is parking areas.
That's gotta be it.
It's right here, yeah. Okay, so it's, and then it gets into some of the widths, is nine-point-one-three-point-six, correct?
Nine-point-three-one-six.
That's width, you're talking length. That's all the, the, uh, grading.
So, I think you would go section nine-point-one-two-point-two. Nope, that's loading, that's, that's off-street loading. Off-street parking.
You're, you're in the right area.
Yeah, sorry.
It's a, so, nine-point-one-three-point-one says the number of required parking spaces shall conform to article five-point-six-point-four off-street parking schedule, that's the number.
That's the zoning.
As outlined in the zoning ordinance. But doesn't, I don't see where it references depth.
Yeah, that, that's actually in zoning, that's the five-point-six-three.
Yeah.
So-
Five, is it five-point-six-four or five-point-six-three?
In zoning.
Is it three?
I think it's three. But-
So if we did nine-point-one-three- Next time if we have the wrong number. And-
Right.
Five-point-six-point-three.
I think if you just do, because zoning allows you guys to do it, if it's zoning, uh, then you just go to nine-point-one-three parking areas.
Yeah.
And you just grant a waiver to nine-point-one-three.
Okay. Board comfortable with that? I mean-
If we, if we did it wrong, we can amend it when we put the minutes, David tells us to-
You think so?
Yeah, Dave tells us we're wrong.
Yeah, we can, uh, I always suggest another thing.
The spirit of the waiver is there.
Spirit of the waiver.
Spirit of the waiver. The number might be right or wrong, but the verbiage, Aaron's going to make the-
Trying to get there, all right. Feel free to correct me, Peter.
Sir?
Feel free to correct me when I get this wrong. Yes, he's, I've been waiting for this moment for a while.
I'm holding my breath.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, to approve the request of Great Bridges Properties LLC, planning board case number nineteen-dash-nineteen, for a waiver from regulation nine-point-one-three of the site and subdivision regulations, I make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor, voiceful, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Attention? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next.
Okay, so the next waiver is, um, stormwater waiver, and that's to section, um, thirteen, I'm sorry, uh, nine-point-three, stormwater management standards. And it reads, uh, waiver two is a separation for an estimated seasonal water of three feet, required waiver request to one-point-eight feet.
We have a memo that just says you didn't need any waivers, so I'm, I'm a little confused. The parking I get was last-minute kind of a thing, but-
Yeah, so, I mean, it, we don't necessarily need a waiver, I just, just clarify then, what we had done is to-
Updated to the current aid.
That's correct. And so you-
I don't, you don't need a waiver.
No.
We've been through this.
Yeah.
You don't need a waiver.
I would not throw the waiver around.
All right, vote.
If you feel you need it, we'll deal with it.
I, I don't need it. I don't need it, I, we wanted to make sure we-
Yeah, then not mess with it.
Shh. Feel pretty good about that, because that's something we're working on, is trying to have our regulations line up, so you need fewer waivers.
Yeah, got it. And, and you're, you're covered as well.
Did you have another one?
No, that was it.
That was it.
So the other one was just a stormwater, which Underwood has taken care of.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so then we're on to the-
Okay.
Site plan.
Would you like to hear the, uh, conditions that have been suggested by our town planner?
Yeah, that, that's standard.
Standard electronic as-built plant, number one, as-built plan, the entire property with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the insurance, issuance of certificate of occupancy. Plan must be in drawing or X, uh, excuse me, DWG or DXF file format, and in N A, N A D, nineteen-eighty-three state plane, New Hampshire, FIPS, twenty-eight-hundred feet coordinates.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are we reading these as conditions? Or, or what, what's the purpose?
Condition of approval.
Condition of approval.
Okay, but don't we have to have those specifically read as conditions to the approval?
That's what he's doing.
That's what I'm doing.
All right.
If you'd like to, are you ready for that or not?
No, that's all right, go ahead.
Making Lang do some work, it's kind of nice to see. Got, got some energy in him.
Hey, you're making the clerk.
Okay, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing, the following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. One, SWPPP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, uh, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for, for approval by DPW prior to pre-construction meeting, and aye aye of a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Number three, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer-water connection fees, impact fees, and, and inspection fees, including third-party inspectors, inspections, prior to the issuance, issuance of building permit or certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable as determined by the town. All applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans, and maintenance log and inspection and maintenance checklist for all onsite stormwater management systems shall be provided to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to the signing of the final plans. A completed log and checklist shall be submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January thirty-first. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. All outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways, which we've discussed. All landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained, and any dead, excuse me, dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced, no later than, or the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the verification procedures set forth in the state statutes. And, if determined applicable, the, by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAPP online missable track, tracking tool. And the PTAPP submittal must be accepted by the DPW. Prior to the construction meeting. Excuse me. The limit of disturbance shall be flagged in the field prior to any site work, and these flags shall be maintained until the certificate, uh, certificate of occupancy has been issued for all units. And, number ten, the applicant shall contact code enforcement officer, CEO, and department fire chief, DFC, to determine the address for the units. With any other?
Now, who moved this motion?
Nobody's moved the motion.
David Sharples.
David Sharples.
That's from David Sharples.
The motion should be read. Now, let me just say this for me.
These are suggested.
This is David Sharples.
These are, these are-
I know, but normally what, never mind.
Go ahead.
The applicant never reads David's memo.
Normally, no, no, normally you say, I'm, somebody says, I move-
Right. You're right, Peter.
I move the request of Great Bridge Properties-
Want to copy that?
LLC, PB case nineteen-nineteen, for site plan approval be approved with the following conditions. Yes, what we don't have yet.
I just read them.
No. You gotta put it in proper order.
You're right.
I'm sorry. You've read them.
Okay, I'm just doing what David usually does. He usually reads the conditions. Would you like to hear the conditions?
No, I don't want to hear the conditions again, but let's put, or a motion, because they're attached, they're approved, subject to those conditions. You've just read something that, without any predicate. Now, I'm sorry.
So we actually make the motion, as he said, make this motion, and then we read the conditions, so-
But he totally read, what I'm, what I'm going to do-
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Is suggest that we tack this on first.
Right.
That the minutes would reflect, we have this motion, and then it's subject to the, and you've just read them. No, that's, I'm sorry, but that's, we, we gotta do it that way, I believe.
Okay, that's fine.
But we don't have to read the conditions.
You do not have to read the conditions again, all we're going to do, put, make-believe, and forget what I just said, make-believe, we're going to, we're going to attach them to this motion. Now, will somebody make this motion?
You just, you just did.
Just what I was going to say.
I move, at the request of Great Bridge Properties LLC, PB case, or planning board case nineteen-nineteen, for site plan approval, be approved with the following conditions. That, then, then the minutes will pick up.
At this point.
At that point, will pick up your eloquent reading.
This is where the secretary-
I second the motion.
Oh, good.
Thank you. Now, shall we move to go ahead?
Yes. Are there any, my question now is, are there any other conditions that should be included with these?
And I don't think we have any more. I don't believe we have any.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I guess, you know, I don't want to drag this out anymore, but just reviewing the, um, Underwood, um, memo from yesterday, under the, um, their bullet two on the second page, where they say, they have no technical reason to obstruct a waiver request for the GRV infiltration, which, that suggests to me that they're, they're may, I don't know, I don't know if that's the wrong wording, we were saying, is, but they're saying there's no reason to obstruct a waiver request, which makes me wonder if a waiver is still required, maybe it's a question for Dave, maybe it's a condition that that gets sorted out, uh, but I just wanted to flag that, given Underwood's, um-
Well, Dave's memo said that there were no waivers required, so I'm going to assume he went through all that. I wonder if he wrote that. That just came, when did that get printed?
That came yesterday.
Yesterday?
It, it was dated yesterday.
And this was from the sixteenth? Oh, wait a minute. This is from the sixteenth, so that, that followed his memo.
Right.
Do you know what that's about, or do you?
It, it's, it's just the stormwater, catching up to the stormwater rules, that, that's all it is, so when we, when we submitted this to Underwood, so we showed that, that what we have here meets the requirements of the current zone, uh, current, uh, stormwater, and then what we had asked for was just, because of the, the new rules, we just, we just brought it to their attention, and what they're saying is, they don't have any problem with what we, what we provide it.
Right, but they say, for, to obstruct a waiver request, do we need a waiver? I think that's the question I'm asking, is, given the language of Underwood, do we need a waiver for this GRV infiltration?
If he's complying with the current regulations, we don't need a waiver.
Okay.
Right.
I'm complying by, by, by showing Underwood what we've done, and they, they've accepted that.
Yeah, so we're good.
Yeah, that's, that's, we've worked pretty hard, because our regulations and the state regulations weren't really lining up all the time, so we were repeatedly getting people looking for waivers for one or the other.
Yeah.
And we've tried to streamline that in the engineering process and-
However, if you, if you want me to come up with a waiver, I can come up with whatever you need, it's up to you guys.
Nostalgia.
I mean, I, I think we're covered, but whatever you guys feel comfortable doing.
Okay.
I mean, there's no real, our interpretation is you don't need one, at least mine is.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I can only speak for myself.
No, I agree with you.
And the, um, I did get an email from Dave Sharple's today as the vice chair, and I know Lang, you got one as well. Can you pull that up at all?
Yes, I can, in a second here.
Which related to this project. Wonders it's modern technology.
Oh, no, we gotta go here.
Call old pink guy.
Okay.
He might not like that nickname. That could be a wrong.
What if he's watching?
Great Bridge Properties, the application is complete for review purposes and can be accepted. The last outstanding matter with the drainage was worked out between E U I, excuse me, U E I, Underwood, and the applicant yesterday. If the board decides to take action on the application, I'm prepared to take suggestions for your approval, and will get them to you at some point today, and I had them here this evening, and I read them out of order.
You didn't need to say that.
Oh.
Okay. A little salty there. It's getting late in the night.
That's all he has to say, Kristen was asked to be here, but she has a conflict.
So that tells me that our town planner's saying you don't need that.
Well, so.
That the only thing that came about was the parking space dimensional waiver that you requested, and we're granted.
Yep.
I can't tell you not to ask for it.
I don't, I don't know if we need one, I mean, we, we.
I'm telling you, I don't think you do, so.
But we did it, so that's taken care of.
Well, no, we're talking about this.
He'll be back if you do. I guess that's, if there was any, well.
I'm, I'm a little, I guess, concerned. I have to get this right. And I'm really relying on everybody here, because.
Dave's very, very meticulous, and in that email, if we needed to get a waiver for stormwater, he would've told Lang we needed one.
And he addressed it, that it was dealt with by the, by the consultant outside.
I hear what you're saying.
We're good.
Oh, because that's what it says. It was dated yesterday. That email's dated today. Yeah, I think we have to, we don't grant waivers that aren't necessary.
Yep.
That's contrary to what we've been trying to do with waivers.
Exactly.
To grant something that's not necessary.
Which is taking longer.
Yeah, probably.
We're, we're confident that we're fine.
Well, I, I think, actually, since it was brought up, and what he just said, I do have a waiver written to that.
Okay.
Which is a stormwater.
Okay.
So if you guys can grant, it would be great, then we don't, then we can put it to bed, we don't have to come back if there's any question. And it's a two-foot separation of seasonal high water table.
Just a moment, I got a motion on the table, I need to have it withdrawn, I think, probably. I don't wanna table that motion.
Yeah, you can't really have that motion without, I don't know, waivers haven't been acted on.
So, I'll let's see.
Well, I guess the question is, is Dave, if Dave says, it's, I didn't see that email from Dave. I just saw the memo, and it's had some language in, but, so I'm fine if Dave's staying behind it.
We'll, we'll go ahead for, for dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but who seconded that motion, you made it.
I did.
I, I got no problem, I just wanna make sure.
You made the motion. Momentarily?
And I seconded.
And Pete, we withdraw the motion, so we can get the table clean, and then we can deal with this waiver, and we'll ask you to remove that motion.
But I'm pretty sure I understand what you wanna do.
Okay.
You wanna put, you wanna consider another waiver, and then you're gonna add some language to put into an additional condition?
No, 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 no.
That's the, we're, we're voting, we're considering the motion now.
We have to take it off the table, Peter, because the applicant wants another waiver.
Well, Mr. Chair, can I just, for clarity?
Alright, I'll take the motion off the table, I don't agree with it, but I'll take it off, just to get things moving.
For discussion purposes, what, what I'd like to do is just wanna read through what we had done and why. And so you guys can make a determination, whatever it is.
Okay.
So, when we're doing the stormwater, the new rules and regulations, what we, what we had done is, we had proved to, uh, Underwood that all our requirements could meet all the requirements of, of what you guys are looking for. We requested a, a G R V infiltration, three-foot separation to groundwater, uh, and U F V has reviewed the supporting information provided with a waiver request, which we've done, and sees no technical reason to obstruct the waiver request, as the intent of the pretreatment is being achieved. So your rules require that we have to have a three-foot separation to groundwater, we have a one point six foot, a one point eight foot separation to groundwater uh, for G R V calculation, which we show we meet, and they, they have concluded that they, they, they're okay with that. So they're saying in here that, that if, if, if we're asking for a three-foot separation, which I have the waiver written, that's what we're asking for. There is no other, there is no other, no, there is no other, um, let me make sure. Waiver two is separation for estimated seasonal high water table, and waiver three was allow a seventy-six foot long treatment swale, where a hundred foot long treatment swale is required. And so what the hundred foot treatment swale is, is a, is a standard that says a hundred feet will give you the, the treatment necessary for the nitrogen removal, and we showed by calculation that the seventy-six that we have in here is adequate. So those are the two waivers for stormwater that, uh, they have reviewed and would, would grant. So I would ask that we can read these in, and you guys grant those waivers, 'cause your reviewer's already done that. Does that make sense? Not to drag it out, but I think, from, from Chris's perspective, I, I.
I can completely sympathize with you. I think if I were in front of this board right now, I would be pushing for a waiver.
Okay. So waiver number two, uh, which is separation for estimated seasonal high water table required, three feet required, waiver request to one point eight feet. And it is written, you need me to read the continuous, the whole continuous thing, so let me go through it. The granting of the waivers will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare injurious to other property, the waiver to allow one point, one point eight feet of separation from the bottom of the infiltration basin, where three feet is required by New Hampshire DOT rules, for infiltration basins will not be detrimental to the public safety or injurious to other properties, because this added basin provides greater treatment than exists today, and treats stormwater at a greater level than it is currently treated. Seven point two, the conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property and not applicable generally to other property. The property has u, unique geometry, it's long and narrow, bound by wetlands on the south and east. The geometry of the property lends itself to the proposed infiltration basin, where setbacks from the wetlands are maintained, reducing the depth of seasonal high water, high, seasonal high water table from three feet to eight, one point eight feet are critical to treating stormwater to the greatest extent practical, and to providing a stormwater treatment that allows for incorporation into the site design. Seven, thirteen point seven point three, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out. Due to the shape of the property involved, it would be hardship to the owner to reconfigure the A O T-approved stormwater management plan. Again, that refers to all the setbacks that exist now with the wetlands that we maintain. Thirteen point seven point five, the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or the master plan. The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan, the town of Exeter stormwater management standards are being met for groundwater recharge. That is waiver number two.
Okay.
Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion on that? Okay. I can do it, or do you wanna do it, Nico?
No, go ahead. By the way, for the record, I withdraw my second.
Good idea.
Thank you.
I thought you left behind an eye on yourself.
Can you give me that number again?
It is, um, okay, actually, you wanna go to the zoning regulate?
Is it thirteen seven point three, point seven point three?
Okay, again, we're referring to, um.
Site.
Yep.
Plan review and subdivision regs. Go on again.
Thirteen point seven point three?
Take that zoning.
No.
Okay.
Um, stormwater is section nine point three. Stormwater management standards, management plan, prevent, uh, SWP plan and so forth, so it's, it's a section nine point three.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers to approve the request of Great Bridges Properties LLC, Planning Board Case Number nineteen dash nineteen of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations, number nine point three, I said that already, for stormwater management, I move to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, thank you, next, three please.
Waiver number three, allow a seventy-six foot long treatment swale, where a hundred foot long treatment swale is required, again, to section nine point three. The granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare injurious to other property, the waivers to allow a seventy-six foot long treatment swale, where a hundred foot is required, I'm paraphrasing, I apologize, is required by New Hampshire DOT's A O T rules, will not be detrimental to the public safety or injurious to other properties, because this added treatment swale provides greater treatment than exists today, treats stormwater at a greater level than it is currently treated today, greater than sixty percent total nitrogen removal. Thirteen point seven point two, the conditions upon which this request for a waiver is based are unique to the property and not applicable generally to other property. The property has a unique geometry, it is long and narrow, and bound by wetlands on the south and east, the geometry of the property lends itself to the proposed seventy-six foot long treatment swale, where, where setbacks from the wetlands are maintained, reducing the length of the treatment swale are critical to treating stormwater to the greatest extent practical, and providing a stormwater treatment that allows for incorporation into the site design. Set thirteen point seven point three, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished by a mere, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. Due to the shape of the property involved, it would be a hardship to the owner to reconfigure the A O T-approved stormwater management plan, and it would extend into the wetland setbacks. Thirteen point seven point four, the granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. The granting of a waiver to allow a seventy-six foot long treatment swale, where a hundred foot long treatment swale is required, is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, because the stormwater is being treated to a level greater than required by the regulations, as, as, as is the intent of the rule. Thirteen point seven point five, the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of, of the zoning ordinance or master plan, the town of Exeter stormwater management standards are being met for pollutant removal.
Am I gonna go again?
Yes.
Nine point three.
You've had practice, go for it.
Alright. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I am moving to approve the request of Great Bridges Property LLC, Planning Board Case Number nineteen dash nineteen for a waiver from Regulation nine point three stormwater management, as read by the applicant's representative of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations, be approved.
Second.
Second, excuse me, any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nays, um, abstentions?
Yes.
Okay, one abstention. Motion carries. Six one.
Get your waivers.
Thank you.
Have you a motion for us?
Yes, sir. If I can find this.
Right here.
I got it. I move, at the request of Great Bridge Properties LLC, Planning Board Case nineteen nineteen for site plan approval, be approved with the following conditions.
Second.
Okay, those conditions are the ones that we read.
I think you can, I think you can reference, having already read these.
Conditions were read into the record with respect to an earlier motion, and therefore I would ask the board's concurrence that those conditions, as so read in, uh, be attached to and made a part of this motion.
Second.
I'm good with that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
There's a second.
And then, are there any other conditions that anybody feels we need to impose?
Didn't hear any others before. Now, do we have two? Alright, then I'll call a vote, hand vote this time, please, those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, thank you.
Alright.
Hope we got you what you need.
I will look into the windows.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, no master plan discussion.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Alright.
I will second the motion if someone hasn't already.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Let's do it, thank you.